Our goal was to, um, look for a master's students that will be interested. And now we're just trying to like work with our schedule in ours.
All right, I think we are, I think we are back. Our live stream is going again. So we were looking for a motion to continue 151 Main.
I'll make a motion to continue the site plan approval application for 151 Main Street to March 28th.
I'll second that.
Anna, roll call vote?
Deepa Rankai.
Anna Tysmanitzki, aye.
Marcelo Rona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So, we will see that on March 28th. All right, moving on. Our second public hearing is, um, nine to forty-nine Homer Avenue. This is the, um, project we've been looking at for a little while now. We're getting into the, the, um, the end part, I guess, of it. Um, site plan and special permit application. So I think the, um, Peter, do you just wanna?
Yeah, I can just give a quick update. Uh, obviously, this project has been with us, uh, but we have been, uh, at the last meeting, we combed through the special permit and the site plan, uh, findings and conditions. Um, there was some edits made. Uh, those are highlighted in blue. Um, I believe I sent, uh, them to, to, to all the planning board members and we have printed copies here tonight. I just want to make a note that Terry Morris, uh, the attorney for the project, and Mr. Charlie Zamudo, part of the application team, indoor owner of the, the land area, uh, is here tonight along with Ron Bork. I know one of the items that did come up, obviously in conversations, uh, indoor, one of the loose ends, was, um, the pergola within the pocket park. And so I believe, um, in your binders, you'll be able to find a rendering of the pergola. Um, this is from a, excuse me, a earlier rendering of the building, so please, um, don't, don't pay any attention to the colors per se, but you can kinda see where that pergola is going to be located within that pocket park and how that will be built. Obviously, it'll be timber, um, and, uh, it will have matching asphalt roof shingles to the building. And, and that's just something that was going to be added into the decision, uh, just as, as a loose item. So, as the conversation, uh, continues with, with the decision, uh, I'm sure I have, I'll more to input, but I just kinda wanna make a clear note of that. Um, that information was collected, uh, to date. And Marcelo and Amanda, I can share my screen and show that to you.
Yeah, I think we can, we can go back to the pergola when we get, like, as we go through and we get to that part.
Yeah.
So maybe we should just start, um, again with the, with the special permit. Um, and make our way through. Obviously, everything can always be asked, but the blue areas, um, and, and, and maybe we wanna bring it, maybe we wanna bring up the special permit document.
Yes.
Online as well. Um, but the areas in blue indicate the things that are changed since our meeting two weeks ago and the questions that were still remaining, um, on those items.
I have a question. In addition to the blue, did the last meeting, we make it through everything? Cause I feel like we were close, but I, um, I'm not sure we, we, as a board, got through the entire draft. Cause it was coming along pretty well, right? We were agreeing, we were doing some live edits. But I just don't wanna, um, maybe miss that and just focus on the blue if that's, if it's not true that we didn't fin, or if it, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, um, obviously we'll continue on the, um, on all the conditions.
Yeah.
As we go through them. Um, but most of them, and we can ask when we get there, but I think all the things like special project conditions are, um, are things that are tip, more typical project conditions.
They're probably not, okay.
Yeah, like the-
I don't unfortunately remember what page we got to together, like, last time.
Well, I think we're really starting, um, on page nine. Again, with the blue.
Yeah.
So we're kinda going back. There was no blue anywhere before that, I don't think.
Yeah.
So, um, and then most of the end of it is just, is just really our standard conditions about processes and, um, the stuff that's always in there, so. So anyway, the first place of blue is, um, this is in the fi, no, it's in the special permit criteria, so it's in the findings, and that's just, um, an, uh, approval or a waiver of the typical parking dimension of nine by twenty to be in the subsurface spaces. It is nine by twenty on the surface spaces. On the subsurface spaces, the, the, um, spaces are nine by eighteen with a twenty-four inch wide aisle. Um, the, uh, GCG, um, I don't remember their exact wording. It would be in the documentation. That was acceptable. I think that's what they said. Um, but it needs the approval of the planning board. So that is in the findings. Any?
And the standard is nine by twenty?
The, in, in the Ashland definition of a parking space, we have it as nine by twenty. Anyone?
Is the, is the reason for that because, is, is there something going on subsurface that this type of modification allows for some other important task or accommodation, like a access point? Do we have a sense of wh- why it's necessary for the project? I think anytime we're kinda going off the norm, it's good to understand.
I, I think, I think we can ask Ron, but it, it's important to understand that this, the idea of a norm, um, like the Ashland, um, bylaws, as far as I know, do not specify the width of an aisle. They only specify the width of a space. So often you'll see twenty, twenty, twenty used. Um, I think the fire department prefers the wider aisle.
The twenty-four aisle.
Yeah, the fire department's always gonna want a twenty-four i, a twenty-four foot aisle. When you start looking into these parking dimensions, these parking lot dimensions, parking stall dimensions, I'm gonna tell you right now, uh, a twenty, twenty is the biggest space that's typically ever practically provided. Um, and so a eighteen, uh, eighteen foot space is a common, and it's common across the board in any, um, plaza, you know, shopping plaza, mall, um, any, any, any sort of development of that nature where you have a lot of parking, you know, some parking spots altogether. So I think the request is in line with other elements that we've, other, other projects that we have permitted. Um, and so I have also seen through research that, that in nine by eighteen will be decreased for a compact space down to eight by fifteen in some locations. Uh, and so what the, the, the definition of norm is gonna be across the board, right? And so I think a normal space, uh, would, would be nine by eighteen. In Asheville, we just call for twenty.
And I meant like contrary to our bylaw. So that's what I meant. If the bylaw says nine by twenty and we're doing something different, our norm, our bylaw norm. But, I mean, I don't have a problem with it because I, what I'm hearing is this is sub, um, subsurface. It appears to, um, so I'm okay with that as long as we don't create, you know, precedent where every little parking space we do, we, we go with this. So I can see how if it's subsurface, I'm okay with this.
The only continuation that I was searching for and I could not remember is one of the reports, if I'm right, maybe it was a GCG report where there were columns in some of those nine by eighteen parking spots, which I don't remember if they came back and said they reworked something and cleared that. I, that's, I was looking for those drawings, I was like, could not find it.
Yeah, I did, I did, um, I looked at that note. I remember the note you meant, and they said that the, the parking spots are nine by, you know, nine by eighteen. But whenever there's a column, which of course isn't every parking space.
Yeah.
Um, then that's going to reduce the size of that spot by half a column.
Sure.
Say. And, um, yeah, so up, and typically those are at the end of, at the end of the spot, not at the, not, if you're pulling in, it's not where your door is.
Yeah.
So I would imagine it would go into, you know, six inches on a side or something like that.
They didn't lose, lose spots because of that condition anywhere? Number of parking spots?
No, the parking, the number of parking spots is still what it's required to be, if that's your question.
Like, I know we talked about it and I just couldn't figure it out. Thank you.
All right, so everyone good? Can we, we can move on? Okay. Uh, next, under neighborhood character and social stu- structures. So this is just a move. But the first part of that, was that changed? I don't remember. The addition of a pocket park for, uh,
No, no.
Yeah, I think the first part of that is just, I don't think anything changed there.
No, nothing changed there.
But the, the second part of that is about the, um, is about the mural wall. Because, um, so we moved it as a finding because of the difficulty we're having in that there is no, there's, there's no way to put a responsibility on it. There's no funding mechanism. There's no, none of these details which have to be worked out in order to make it a, you know, in order to really have this be structured, we're kinda having this difficulty with the Starbucks mural, right? We kinda threw it out there and now we have to kinda, um, figure it out on the fly. So what this does is still accept the gift that we've been allowed to do this, but it leaves it a little bit open-ended of how are we gonna do this and who's gonna do it? And where's the funding gonna come from and what it actually is? So, um, we thought it was more appropriate, Peter and I, after talking to different people in the town, found that this was maybe the more-
And I've done some research on this, right? And I, I looked at chapter forty-eight. I've talked to folks in town hall, uh, and I actually wrote a memo on it. And that, the number one thing is that under chapter forty-eight and the zoning board's responsibilities, we really don't have, the planning board doesn't have the responsibility, right, indoor, the power to, 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 to put, in, in like we did, right, with, with the Starbucks, right? We, we took it, but then we, we brought in a third-party entity, which would be the town of Asheville, right? And so I think I, in, in looking at everything that's kind of evolved, uh, you know, I think the best move for us is to move it into the finding section. Because with the condition, we can really not allow to, to take something and, and, and put it on a third-party entity, right? It doesn't really become enforceable because it's not really with the project and we don't really have the power over a third-party entity, right? And so therefore, it was, I found it to be most appropriately placed in a finding section under neighborhood character.
I mean, I'm, I'm not convinced moving it somehow relates to third-party, which would be the town of Ashland. I, I think where I'm coming from is it's on a project that is just site plan review. Um, you can't force, you can't force a pocket park. Um, this is special permit. We have a little bit more leeway, but even here, I don't think any of us wanna force it. I think the consensus of the board was we did not wanna force this at all. Instead, it was, I would call it as a conversation. I think it was first brought up by the applicant, not by the board, in this instance.
It was.
And so where it's being offered and we accept it, where it's located in the decision, condition or finding, as long as we're not forcing some random entity to do it, I don't really see that it matters where it's located in the decision. I do think it's really important to recognize that we absolutely have jurisdiction to work with any applicant who's willing to offer this and to accept it. And I also believe we have a right as a planning board in those situations to come up with a protocol that might include talking to other entities to figure out how they might wanna be part of something like this, either for this project or any other project. And as long as there's consensus, like down the line, I'd love to get this board to a point where we have a, an understood protocol that works for other entities, whether it's our art-related nonprofits or our town entities, where there's a mutual, um, interest in making something like this happen. And it's more likely to happen in partnership with the select board or with these entities. And I think where it is in the decision, I don't think in some way oversteps our bounds.
Yeah, I, I think the question is here, um, I think the critical word Peter left out in what he just said versus the way he described it to me, is that conditions usually are, are able to be enforced, right? And so how are we enforcing a mural where we don't have an artist or funding or maintenance? We don't really know what it is. Maybe it's, maybe it's something different. Maybe it's a different kinda artwork. Right? So it's a, it's still that the, the applicant is, um, has offered and the planning board is accepting this, this space, right? But there's nothing to, we don't have anything in place as a town or as a board where something is enforceable, right?
So this is where, like, I'm not sure. I think that we, we absolutely have a right to enforce, uh, design, right? And so we have a right to say, we want, if the applicant is agreeing, which I believe they are, right, they're, they're offering this, then in a sense, they're offering a space. We can't enforce a painter to come in and paint it. We can't say, you, the applicant, must find a painter and get this done. But we absolutely can enforce a design that we come into agreement with where a wall is available for such a project. So I kinda disagree. I, I agree that we can't force the, the drawing, but we, design is the part that we can absolutely have jurisdiction over, assuming it's a condition that is agreed upon in a special permit.
Well, let's see where, let's see where everyone sits on it.
And what I'm trying to say, and also what comes into play is, we can't pull in a third-party entity such as the town or somebody else to be dependent upon a condition.
Right, and I think the last time we all agreed that we would not, I don't recall us ever saying, oh, let's force some entity to make it happen. I think we talked exactly about this idea that we would want to work with the applicant to develop a protocol. And maybe we, as a planning board, would create some sort of precedent because I recall the last time, we were like, huh, this is something new that we seem to be doing. We're learning as we go between the Starbucks and this project. Maybe we should come up with a protocol. So I, I absolutely agree that I would not wanna force any entity to come in and save the day. I think it's our responsibility to come up with a protocol that we partner with the right entities who are also interested. I think there's folks in this community who love public art.
Let's, well, let's let everyone weigh in. I think we understand where, where you're sitting on it. Kate?
Um, well, I, I have a problem having something in decisions that's not enforceable. So I think, I mean, it's kind of along the lines Anna's thinking. I, I don't understand why it wouldn't be enforceable if we're telling them what color they have to paint it and what materials and what color the roof is. So I, I, to me, it seems like a disconnect that we're, this isn't enforceable. And I, that, that's where I have confusion. Why isn't it enforceable? And then certainly moving it to a place where you're telling me it's not enforceable, then it shouldn't be in our decision.
I think it's not quite how, I, I don't think that's quite coming off the way I think it comes off, but, um, but I see what you're saying. I guess, I mean, I think it's fine if, um, wherever we put it, as long as it's just, as long as we just keep it open because we have no, we have no other information on this. We have no other, there is nothing else to add, which is why the Starbucks mural is, behind the scenes, has been tricky, right? So, but let me go to people online. If Amanda or Marcelo wanna weigh in?
Yeah, um, I, I, I really don't have a problem with it one way or another. And I think probably would, would kind of, in my opinion, spending kind of too much energy on something that is kind of relatively tangential to the project. I think that, that the phrase looks fine and, uh, the, the only thing I would say, and, and, and I guess whether it's here or there, it's kind of, to me, a distinction without a difference. The, I, I, I think we're saying here that it, it has been offered and it has been accepted. The, the part that I think is a little, uh, confusing to me, at least, is when they say at the end that the applicant may choose to work with the planning board to develop, uh, process for implementation. I guess the word may could be may yes or may not. So I, I, I think the intent is that we accept the space as offered. And I think maybe what we should just say is that the, 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 the planning board will follow up with, with steps for implementation, just like Anna said, that you, you, we, we will maybe develop a protocol. In the meantime, it, it, it gets on the record that we accepted, uh, the offer.
So Marcelo, would you, where it says may, would you change that to will? Like, will work with the planning board? Is that what you were implying?
Or just kind of reverse it? Just say that the, the planning board will-
Will work with the applicant?
Will, will, will set up, uh, the, the steps to working with the applicant to, to implement it. And that, and that goes to the point that maybe we need to just spend a, a little time thinking on, on the protocol. Uh, the implementation, this is not critical to the project. This is not germane or imminent that has to get done. And I, I think, I, I like the idea of developing, uh, a system. Um, instead of just going willy-nilly on, on, on project after project with, with, with lack of, of tools. Uh, I think just saying that, that has been offered and accepted and therefore now that space is, is basically reserved for implementation under the direction of the planning board. And that, that's, that'll be enough for me.
Thank you. Amanda, do you wanna add in?
No, I agree. I think it makes sense in this section. Um, just given that, you know, I think this type of an art installation is absolutely something that's gonna add to neighborhood character. It's, it's a valid social structure. I think concerns around having it in conditions, um, last meeting were valid and it makes sense here. And I think, um, I like that rewording because I think it makes it, it puts the onus on us to work with the applicant to take the process forward, but it also rem, sort of removes any ambiguity around whether or not it's, you know, we're saying it's been offered, we accept it, it's gonna happen, you know, we'll take the implementation process forward with the applicant.
Deepa?
Um, I think that small tweet that Marcelo suggested makes a lot of sense. That gives us, I like that space to think about.
I don't think we can hear Deepa online.
I just seconded what you just said, Marcelo. Um, nothing more to add.
So, so would that just be a simple change of saying the planning board will work with the applicant to develop a process for implementation?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just kinda wanna be, put it out there, you know, I think it's on, the onus needs to be on the planning board because, you know, what if happens if protocol cannot be agreed upon, you know, going back and forth? I don't think that will happen. But I think just in any instance, when you're dealing with art, public art, it, it comes down to an opinion, right, on what, what the design shall be, what it looks like. So I just wanna make sure that we're clear on, on, um, the onus should lie on the planning board.
Yeah, I think that's true. Okay, so why don't we reverse that to the planning board will work with the applicant to develop a process for implementation? And where do we wanna put it? I'm really open-
Something like, um, approval will not be unreasonably withheld, like some language that we do in, in, in our things, like, because I, again, I, I think-
Approval by the applicant?
Right. I, I think the intent is to work with us. I think the intent is to get it, but words matter and this is essentially becomes a contract on file. So I think we should have something like that, which I know is still undefinable, but we use it to the benefit of applicants, right? We can't-
That's fine. Shall we, everyone's good with that?
Yeah.
But, yes, but I wonder how, what that process will look like. Would they have to come back to kind of such a presentation?
I, no, I think it's more like what's happening with Starbucks, that it's happening offline, you know, and so our means of doing that was finding somewhat, another committee that's, that's actually handling it for us. So, and whatever that board is, is working together, but.
But I think the point of approval is, is, is kind of separate from this. I, I, and, and I don't, I, I kind of think it, it models, it, it just models the, the, the whole thing. The, 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 what this paragraph is saying is just about reserving the space for the planning board to decide on how to implement the process to get a mural or, or, or an art, art project. It's not about who's gonna approve or not. No, we are going to determine that. The, the, it, it, this should just be squarely on, 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 on the four corners of the offer has been accepted and we will develop a step for implementation. Um, I, I'm not sure that, add, add, adding detail to it when we don't have even the basis.
So you don't think the last line is needed? The approval unwithheld kinda thing?
Well, there's not, there's not, there's not, there's no approval that-
Okay.
Well, I, I only suggested that because people were saying they might not like the art and then they can continuously, the, the worst case of that is I continuously never like anything you bring to me. We never get a mural. Right? So I'm trying to prevent the worst case.
Charlie Zamudo's hand up. Charlie, do you wanna?
Charlie, I've asked you to unmute, but please join the conversation.
Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Yeah, I'm all for the mural. I just don't want any political or hate speech or anything like that. It's gonna be a mutually agreed-upon mural. We don't wanna wind up with something on our building that the community's gonna be against or anybody be offended by it.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I think Starbucks is saying the same thing.
Yeah. How about the art shall be mutually agreeable or agreed upon?
That's completely reasonable.
That's fine. And doesn't, doesn't the school have an art department? Like, the kids can do murals?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna go through the details here. It could be almost anything. So we're just trying to keep this general so that we can have this very general condition in here and we can move on. This isn't something we're gonna work out today when it's still in process with the Starbucks mural, right?
So is that planning board will work?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so the planning board will work with the applicant to dev, to develop a process for implementation.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So artwork shall be mutually agreeable by both parties or? Okay, and I see Terry and Ram's hand up, but unless you have something extremely different to add, then I would rather move on.
Oh, Terry, um, I can ask you to unmute. Sorry, I've-
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I still can't stop my video though. Can you let me do that too?
Uh, yeah, hold on, Terry.
Okay.
But we can still hear your question even if we can't see you, so. So can you give us your question? We have a big agenda tonight.
I can speak, but I can't. Anyway, um, I thought, I listened to the, I was able to hear the whole discussion. I, I think I agree with Marcelo. Uh, and the change that you've made to the, to the, to the, the language that I see in front of me, I think it's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then we'll move on.
Give you the opportunity to comment.
Okay. All right, so we're going to page eleven. We're just adding one word there. Those new pedestrian pathways, which are the same kind of raised sidewalks that we put in on Starbucks is are on the entrance and exit. That might come up in a couple places because we had to add that on. Uh, let's see. Okay, number six, this is about, um, this is about the existing building and how the existing building, um, doesn't meet the current setbacks of the downtown zoning, but we don't wanna tear it down. So just says the board also approves the current setbacks of the existing commercial building to remain, nine Homer Ave, which are non-conforming under the Ashland Downtown District zoning. So, just taking care of that. Number twelve, um, inspectional survey. So-
I, I have one question.
Oh, sorry, Marcelo, I didn't see you.
Just one, uh, one question about the last paragraph. Um, are we saying, I mean, I understand there's, there's a commercial piece of property there that is non-conforming, that, that's fine. Uh, but when we say that we approve it, does that mean that if they decide to redevelop those buildings, uh, are by default approved as non-conforming?
Well, it says, I mean, I, I'm not sure. I mean, we have the, we have the wording that says, um, approves the current setbacks of the existing commercial building to remain.
Exactly. So, but should, should we, do we need to approve? Uh, it's just a question, or should we say that we recognize that they are non-conforming and will remain? I don't know if it makes a difference, but I will defer to Amanda and, and Anna.
I'm trying to remember the language that this, this came, what? What?
I think the language is pretty close to that from GCG.
Yeah, I, I think, I think GCJ, I think GCG said planning board approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I think-
Okay.
E, either way, I, I think it, it's saying the same, it's, it's the same item. It, it's getting across the same point.
Okay, then I'm fine.
All right, so on page twelve, we're on inspectional survey. Um, we just add, we had blasting and hoe ramming and we added- Um, we just add, we had blasting and ho-ramming and we added ground settlement to here. And, um, do you want to review the other things from Mike Carter?
Uh, sure.
Is that the right place for it?
Well, I can review the number, number four. I just wanna kinda go over, so.
Well, but, but number four isn't, we're, we're on number two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, number two.
These are a couple of questions that, um, Kate had made about potential ground settlement. I mean, we had talked about blasting. We had talked about ho-ramming, potentially disturbing some of the, um, surrounding properties and that those would be monitored. Oh, sorry, yeah, you gave them to me, didn't you?
Peter, just so you know, you're still showing the, the, the number six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, everybody.
Yeah, where are they?
Adam.
There you do.
Um, no, you don't. That's something, oh, sorry, everybody.
We have to hunt for a missing email. It's here somewhere. Oh, wait, here they are. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
So just a note, uh, sorry to follow up, is that, um, we did receive an email from Kate and you had a couple of questions on that settlement. And, um, don't we read the email or just kinda review it?
I think it's pretty short, so.
It's pretty short. Says, hi, Peter. Uh, did you get any information from GCG if they think there is a need for, and if so, the method for monitoring for a settlement? I noticed it is added to the list for potential construction-related impacts. The way this is listed, the applicant is required to complete an inspectional survey to set an existing conditions baseline. That was the email from, from Kate. That email was just sent over to Mike Carter for review. Um, I hope that was okay. Um, in his response is, uh, says concerns about the way the condition is written, so as written as you see it today. Says, one, there is no details that would, that the pre-construction existing condition survey, survey needs to be there for. Excuse me.
They're, why don't you just read his?
Oh, yeah, I'll just read his response. If video and pictures of the existing adjacent buildings and property should be provided. So I think we can add that. Set an elevation on the side of each building to be checked over a period of one year after completion of construction. Number two, said there, um, number two, he had no comments. And, and I, I can read it. It says, there is no requirement to submit it to the town. Oh, I'm sorry. Says, there is no requirement to submit it to the town. Merely, merely required to complete some sort of existing condition survey. I'm sorry, this wasn't highlighted in red. We should have it submitted for approval. So I think we need to edit this. Number three, says, there is no requirement for ongoing monitoring without some monitoring. Okay, without some monitoring, how will anyone know if settlement is occurring? Okay, this is a, I think this is a question from Kate, correct? Sorry. Says, submit an elevation report every month until one year after completion, certified by PLS. So those are elements, um, that we can add. Oh. To clo- uh, says, to close this. Okay, can we, okay, it says, um, we can, uh, can we get a settlement, a settlement from GCG that they don't believe monitoring for settlement possible or other construction impacts is needed? We had discuss, discussed having a monitoring plan. Okay, I think this is from you, Kate. And then the last point, uh, there is no comment back. And so, yes, I think we can take what GCG wrote back to us and edit that condition.
Yeah, so basically, basically, I think GCG is saying, um, that a video and pictures of the exterior of adjacent buildings and property should be provided, that they set an elevation on the side of each building to be checked over a period of one year after completion of construction. And then they submit an elevation report every month until one year after completion, certi- certified by a professional land surveyor. Good? Okay, so we will add those things on, but offline. I, I mean, we can do it now.
No, no, a hundred percent.
Probably be going through a lot of iterations and-
Yep.
So. At least let's do it at the end instead of right in the middle here.
Okay.
All right, uh, construction logistics plan and phasing plan, we're on number three. We just added in there applicant shall submit for approval. It, there was just some other phrase in there. I can't remember what it was, but it makes it a little bit more definitive. Number four is water pressure and sewer capacity. So, um, Peter, you have an email. Oh, you, Peter had written this condition, sent it to-
So this condition comes from, uh, I wrote it over the course and then, uh, today, uh, just, I had the chance to talk to Dan Mauer. Dan Mauer is our water and sewer superintendent. Um, and I also was able to meet with Greg Eldridge today, who's our third-party engineer. Uh, and just to read the condition, it says, prior to the insurance of the building permit, the applicant shall consult with the Ashland Water Department, excuse me, the Ashland Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Division to confirm water capacity and available sewer capacity for the addition of the project to the existing town infrastructure. It may be requested by Ashland's town, excuse me, by Ashland's Water and Sewer Division to collect and submit historical water usage data from the past three to five years for comparison against a proposed usage and flow ensuring capacity. And I sent this to Greg Eldridge and Dan Mauer. In, in reply from Greg Eldridge, who is vice president, senior project manager for, uh, Haley and Ward, he wrote back, Peter, we reviewed the proposed language and we feel like insurance waste, excuse me, wastewater and capacity are reviewed, uh, for this project. No, uh, having a longer discussion with Greg and Dan, they felt comfortable with the language and, uh, and they will obviously, Dan has been, Dan and Greg have been re- reviewing this project. Greg has been working in the town of Ashland for 25 years on our wastewater systems and he felt comfortable.
So that was one of the things that was remaining on our outstanding items list? Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that or is that checking off that item on our list? All right, seeing none. Go to page lucky 13. Uh, so this is, uh, just item 11 and this is just the sidewalks and curbs again, and talking about that raised sidewalk. So it just said entrance. And we added to the Alden Street exit. That's, again, one of the things I mentioned before that pops up a few places. Now we're on page 14. This is about the shared parking. We were looking for a little bit more information about a shared, about a shared parking agreement, something that would be legally binding in case, say, the railroad station is sold along with its parking. Peter, is that-
The document.
Is that something that, um?
Is everything okay, Amanda?
Yeah, I was just saying, can you advance the document?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm trying to, I have papers in front of me and I, please remind me. We're on page-
We're on page 14.
14. Sorry about that.
So, um, is this the language, has this language been reviewed by Lisa Mead yet or? It was just her, it was her, some of her suggested language?
So this was a summary of a email that I got from Lisa Mead as a follow-up item. And this comes as, um, a email to Lisa, a email from Lisa. And what I did is I asked Lisa and I attached the, uh, GCG comment below and I asked her the question. Her response and reply, Peter, I agree with Mike. Verification should happen to be sure there are significant surplus spaces to provide the offsite parking. Either a lease agreement between the two parties or an easement is acceptable. I would support the lease agreement. Uh, I said, I would support, I would suspect a lease agreement would be more appropriate, but either works. Uh, I would also require that the lease agreement is for the term of the special permit and until the usage change or lease must stay in place. Further, that the parking should be, uh, dedicated for the uses across the street and there are any changes to the uses on the site, um, of the lease may not increase the required parking such that it impacts the number of spaces covered in the lease. The lease should also require notice to the building inspector should the lease be terminated for any reason. And so therefore I was able to review, I summarized Lisa's email and I tried to create the best condition possible. Uh, I have not been able to verify that and, and check off, you know, Lisa has reviewed this personal condition. However, I did verify with Lisa what that condition would look like.
I think this is a good one for our two attorneys to take a look at the language, knowing that Lisa Mead will be looking at it, um, but to see if it reads, if it reads clearly.
It doesn't seem to cover like a sale of either property. It seems, I mean, like overall pretty good, but then if the current applicant owns both properties, so let's say they sell one or the other. How is that enforceable?
Well, I think that's why the lease agreement is between the two properties. So regardless of ownership, a lease still stands.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's how I understand what Lisa's suggesting.
And they still would submit it for approval to the town. So presumably that's within the jurisdiction of-
Yeah, it seems to me that it would only happen if, if, if one property is sold and they decide not to continue the agreement, then they would have to notify the town and the building inspector and-
I mean, the lease is between those entities. So if somebody else comes in, it's not their agreement. It would not be enforceable. So I, I think the premise is that this is for the duration of this use. You're concerned that what happens after? No, I mean, they, either one of those properties could be sold tomorrow. But we're appro- we're potentially approving a project on a condition that there's access to other parking that tomorrow they may not own. That's my concern. I mean, that's been the concern. It was kinda flagged through GCG report. So I don't think that's taken care of just because there's a lease, 'cause a new owner isn't gonna be obligated to someone else's lease.
Well, it's, it is being recorded with the registry of deeds, so it's-
But how would, how would they carry over a lease that they didn't? Well, a deed restriction's not a lease, though. I mean, a deed restriction's a thing and a lease is a thing. I, I think where so it says lease agreement or easement. I, I think easement hints at, at a potential restriction that could outlive this particular owner. A lease agreement is really between the parties. So I, I, I would say we should go back to Lisa and just clarify which one is it? Is it a lease agreement or an easement?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that needs to be done. Oh, go ahead, Amanda.
I have the same question. I'm wondering why she preferred the lease agreement over the easement because the concern about transferring is, I think, handled by an easement.
Yeah, an easement would be essentially kinda stuck in time for everyone to deal with because that would show up as a problem for the next, the next purchaser would say, oh shit, there's an easement. What do I do?
Right.
And it would influence the value of the purchase. A lease, not my problem. These other people have a lease, but it's not me, so we can't really say lease or, or easement. They're kinda different.
So why don't we, this obviously needs to be checked by Lisa Mead, but who's gonna look at the whole thing anyway, right?
Yeah, she's, she's gonna look at the whole thing. I just wanna make a note, attorney Terry Morris has his hand up.
Yeah, so we can, yeah, so Terry, if you wanna have a comment, you can, but we'll have Lisa and we'll note to her the question about the potential sale of one property and then what happens, that we want to make sure it addresses that concern. I think you made that clear in, when you talked to Lisa about it. But to make sure that she understands that concern.
I can, I can do that. Uh, town planner to Terry. Terry, do you, do you wanna weigh in on this matter?
Yes, I do. The easement is a stronger document than, rather than a lease. The easement can, runs with the land, but as long as the properties are under both, uh, the same form of ownership, you can't grant an easement to yourself. So until such time as this, I think Catherine's observation about recovering it when you change owners, that's when the easement should be required to be put in place because that's what-
So it just needs to be afraid, so it sounds like the, the condition should be there shall be a le- lease and when that lease ends, an easement.
Or if, if ownership changes, there's an easement.
And there is an easement. So we just need to be very firm.
Okay, I think we'll just have to, I'll clarify that condition, obviously with Lisa, and then we'll come back to it.
Okay. So we'll put that one in Lisa's court. All right, uh, sorry. Next on the list is commercial hours of operation. This was suggested by GCG because the parking is shared in the downtown area and there was so, so much reduction of parking in the downtown area. And this is why, so that we get this more density of uses. But to make sure, I, I think it's basically making sure there's no overnight parking by those businesses, that those, those spots need to be used by the residences. So, um, this language was just, uh, taken from another project. We're not saying that this is the right hours of operation. So, but it was a placeholder for our discussion today. I believe it came out of 100 Chestnut.
Am I crazy or isn't this something that the select board has jurisdiction about?
The select board, yes and no. I think I would, so the select board has licensing hours and that's where we kinda got into this, got into a situation with-
Yeah, I remember that. It was a situation.
Concerning, I think, concerning, um, Starbucks. It was a big situation.
Yeah, but, but it's a different situation.
Because it's a special permit.
Well, Starbucks wasn't sharing parking with residential. This is shared parking between residential and commercial. So I think that's, I think that's one of the differences. Starbucks is just Starbucks. They're not sharing with anybody. So they don't have other people that need to use those spots, right? The residences need to use the spots in this case.
So are these hours proposed by the applicant?
I, you know, I think these were taken from the Village of the Americas. I can double-check and look at it, uh, and come back.
What does the applicant want?
We can check in with Charlie Zamudo. He has his hand raised, but I don't know if he just-
So I have asked Charlie to unmute. Yeah, again, this is kind of one of those, Anna, you are correct, we kinda gotten, you know, because the, 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 the select board do have, obviously-
I mean, if it's a bar moving in there, the select board is gonna be deciding how late it's open.
Correct.
So what are we doing? I don't think we should be going to this.
Okay.
I think the, the only thing I'm comfortable doing, just to not step on the select board's toes, is whatever hours that the select board chooses for whatever establishment, the lighting only being on during those hours would, would in theory be on us because that's part of the the overall presence of the building, but I don't think we can drive those hours without knowing what's moving in and whether we have jurisdiction. If it's a bar, it's not us.
I think one of the, and I just jumped, this popped into my head, right, is that, and I think, Tricia, you just hit a note, right? There should be no overnight parking by the businesses, right? So allow those to be opened up by the resident, for, for the residents, right? And I think that's a very nice way to, to move past hours of operation because it's not in our jurisdiction and then-
It might be because it's special permit. We might have a little bit more power than we did with Starbucks, which was site review, I believe.
Site plan review, correct.
So we may have a little bit more power, but I don't know if we need to go there because we don't know what the businesses are, so.
I think the other option in this, which we also implemented, I believe in 100 Chestnut Street, was that if there becomes a problem with parking, that the applicant agrees to issue kind of a parking permit mechanism to limit the amount of cars that are parking. Do you remember that? Like the term, so, so that they need to control their parking problem, that, that everyone has a spot, you know, the businesses and the residential, 'cause it is a, in the downtown area, the bylaw does allow a significant reduction in parking for being downtown, right? So, um-
I can go back and talk to Lisa one more time.
I would make sure that we can do that.
And, and get clarification, but I think, you know, this conversation has kind of highlighted, um, this situation.
I'm all for doing that language if it's allowed. I don't wanna have us do a repeat.
Okay, that makes sense. Said, I think it's a slight, it's a little different condition, but we still need to pay attention to it. Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, those two items, 14 to 15, and I'll-
Were you trying to say something?
Consult with Lisa. Uh, Terry, is that your voice I hear?
Uh, are you, are you, were you trying to say something? You had your hand up. That's why I called you.
Yep.
He's talking to, he's talking to, he's talking to Charlie.
Oh, oh, oh.
What? Charlie? Charlie, what?
Can you, can you mute Terry?
I have, I am unmuted now. They, they can only control the mute.
All right, so, yeah, all right, so we can go back to that if, if, if we see a hand up again. Meanwhile, we'll look at deliveries. Uh, just, again, GCG recommended, um, just limiting the size of the truck. So this is the SU thirty truck, which I believe have is Starbucks. I think the fire department approved an SU forty for their own equipment. So the SU thirty is obviously smaller than an SU forty. What does SU stand for? Does anyone know? I think the thirty is thirty feet. I don't know what the forty is.
S, S U means, uh, single unit.
Single unit?
It's, it's not an articulated truck.
Oh, okay.
It's like a box truck, basically.
Thank you, Marcello. And am I right that the thirty is thirty feet and the forty is forty feet?
Yes, yeah.
All right, um, so let me know if there's more discussion. Otherwise, item seventeen, utility pole, there's one utility pole being moved, and so this is just, um, putting on the applicant the responsibility for, where they have to coordinate the, obviously the relocation, um, with the town and the utility company. I'm sure they were planning on doing that anyway. And they bear all cost relative to the move of that utility pole.
Is this still true? I, I remember that, that the original design, that was true. But when they revised it, I think it went away, because he did, that, that's my recollection. So I, I don't know.
That is correct.
Wait, uh, who, who's speaking there?
That was correct, Madam Chair. That was, Marcello was correct. We did revise, uh, we revised it so that that pole does not have to be removed, and I think it's shown on the latest plan.
So that there's.
Yeah, we went, we went through it, Tricia. Uh, there, there was a revision of the, of the, of the inception of the, of the driveway. Um, and, and, and it misses the, the pole, so this is outdated. I don't think we need to have this one.
So when it went from the wider driveway, because there was an entrance and an exit, to it went to the narrower driveway, that there's.
Yeah, when they were doing the revisions, uh, including all, everything that the fire department said, that one of the revisions realigned the entrance to the driveway to, to miss the pole. So I think that condition is not necessary.
So there is no pole being moved?
No.
Okay, I can confirm that. I'll, I'll confirm that with Rick.
Okay. Um, eighteen is outdoor and street lighting, all exterior street. Now, truth be told, there was, as far as I know, there was no lighting plan submitted. The design review committee made a note of that. So, but, um, I think the, the main points we typically make is that the exterior lighting needs to be dark sky compliant and that light doesn't leave the site boundaries. Those are the things we usually get out of that, so that's why that condition was added in. Any comment on that? All right, um, building brick, we still need to add that in, whatever that is.
Yeah, it's my, it's, that's a Peter thing.
Okay, um, I think other things are updated there. And then the, the new thing on this, um, on the materials is the pergola. So this was something in the design review committee notes that both Kate and I kind of noted, that, um, we talked about the paving, um, on the pergola, but I went back and looked at the final, the drawings that we were always looking at, the set of drawings, and the pergola is always just off the view. You can never quite, you see it in plan, but you can never quite see it in an elevation. So, um, yeah, these are, do you want to bring them up on your screen?
Yep, I can bring them on my screen. I just have to stop sharing.
So I think the general, does everyone, I think everyone has those, okay.
Yeah, it's just gonna be for, uh.
So, I think that, yeah, so this is what Peter had started to describe. No. A lot of illness going around right now again. So I think the general materials, um, and Ron is on there, so we may need here to, him to pipe in, um, is, I, I believe wood to kind of match the wood of the train station across the way. Trim that matches the wood across the way and shingles, and it looks like there's also a kind of a swoop to the, a curve to the bottom of that roof um, to match the train station as well, or to reflect the train station.
Uh, so this is Marcello and Amanda and all other present members. This is the pergola that was in question and obviously out of view of other renderings.
Is, is this open to the public from the street level?
Yes, it's public, a public pergola.
And then I also have a closer view I can switch off, so I can stop.
Not to be completely terrible at directions or proving that I'm not to be trusted with directional things, but like if I'm standing in front of this building and the post office is to my right, like if I'm standing at the old train station looking at this building, where is the pergola?
It's going to be right across the street.
Right across.
It's on the left side of the pocket park. There's two benches facing each other and it's, it's over the left bench away from the building.
Away from the building.
So you have the painting, the mural.
Like where's the train station relative to this thing? Over here on the other side? Okay, okay. I'm just trying to visualize how this would be used by the public.
I think with this, you can see this is the roof line.
Like in theory, if there's a business at the train station, five years from now, people could walk across the street to this thing?
Yeah.
To the pergola?
This is the entry into the.
So it's there.
Okay.
Over that bench.
Okay, got you. There's Homer, there's, okay, that helps me, because I couldn't quite understand how that visualizes with the rest of downtown. Thank you. I'm not to be trusted when I drive, obviously. I'm just like, whoa, if somebody said to me, go, go to the pergola, I'd be like, I don't know what side of the building it's on. Plus, what is a pergola? I've learned something new today.
I think that, yeah, I guess it's a little, well, I don't know.
It's a.
One of those.
Ben, a covered bench, a.
Landscaped.
Yes.
So, um, does anyone want to weigh in on?
The pergola?
The pergola? It, it looks a little heavy, maybe. I mean, we haven't seen anything on this, I mean.
Yeah, it looks like it just flopped in there.
I'm always hesitant in having things come back, but if we're not, you know, we could ask to see it before it's constructed.
Is this something new that the design review did not see?
The design review noted that they had not talked about it or had not really reviewed it, but it remained kind of unreviewed.
I, I, I think with, um, maybe what, what I feel deeper is, is touching on is the, the fact that it's just that two, like, like it has two supports and, and the roof, kind of the roof geometry suggests that would be something with like four supports in the corners, and I don't know, it, it does what makes it look heavy, but, um.
Yeah, the structure's a little questionable from the architectural point of view. Like, it, it's like an umbrella, right?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, like an umbrella. I, I, I think that, I mean, that clearly it is intending to, to kind of, um, you know, take, take clues from, from the station, which, which it's, it's fine to me. Um, I, I, I think, I, I would be fine with it if you just had supports in the four corners and, and I think that would, that would work, but um, I, I, I don't want to, unless we, we really want to do that, I, I think the architect can make that decision and.
You want to unmute Ron?
Uh, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, good. Uh, go to Newton Center, go to some of the old train stations. There's lots of two-post canopies out there. So it's not a structural impossibility.
Yeah, oh, no, no.
It's a Smithsonian vocabulary.
Okay, so, so you are basically basing it on other examples of similar.
Yeah.
Which, okay, I, 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 I think, um, if, if, if the designer feels that that's the way that, that it needs to be, I, 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 I wouldn't have an objection.
Yeah, I mean, I, I prefer it two over four, because I think it'd be a little bit lighter and a little bit, just fewer, it's a small park, and so having fewer posts. But I would also acknowledge that maybe the whole structure might get a little smaller or lighter, um, if, if needed for, you know, if, if needed for those two posts, but I'm, I'm okay letting it in the realm of the architect, the design architect as well.
Um, it could also be the view of the camera, the way we are looking at it, especially the closer one looks skewed a little bit, maybe if there is inspiration images of where this came from, then I'm good.
Okay. All right, so we will put a condition in there, or just that we, that we've discussed the materials, the, you know, of the, and that it will reflect the, you know, reflect the drawings. Okay. Next, we're at GCG recommended conditions. The first one is a test pit. I think that's um, is just something we're typically putting in now, right? And that, I think that came from.
I'm sorry, are we going to fill something in there?
Yeah, we're gonna fill something in. I, I just know our time is limited, so I kind of wanted to get through kind of the major things. Yep.
So we're imagining just a reference to the rendering of some kind.
Yes, maybe listing the materials we talked about, wood, blah, 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 and, um, and reference the drawings, but you'll still get to review it. Okay. So the, the next one is the, the garage basement. Um, this again was a GCG recommend, uh, recommended condition. Um, and that's so that, um, there is a, a water table that there will be hitting, and instead of having sump pumps that will bring all that surface water up to the surface, they're basically making a watertight basement, um, to deal with that condition. Um, which has been in their plan for quite some time, actually.
Peter, you, you're not in that section, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
So, um, the next one is the one-way signage. Again, this is a GCG uh, condition, and they were just asking for, um, because the garage is kind of tight and the site's kind of tight, they were asking for, um, the professional development of the signage to meet um, professional traffic operations, um, uh, for the one-way movement in those areas. So, um, I put that in basically as they, as they kind of gave their concern on that. Just trying to give an overview at least of all the, the blue areas before we need to wrap up today. Um, on page sixteen, um, this is a condition I added in, um, that it just says, um, for the building design, any mechanical, electrical or other equipment or vents visible from public streets but not currently shown in the elevations must be carefully placed and or aligned so as not to mar the approved elevation. So this, we all know that there's going to be likely some little things. These aren't construction drawings, right, nor they can, they can they predict everything that goes into a building at this stage. There's likely to be some stuff and they have to do that carefully. As any good architect would. I'm sure Ron is one of those. Um, placement of larger mechanical, electrical or other equipment or vents on these elevations, so on the public street elevations is not allowed without approval from the planning board. Say big electrical equipment or mechanical equipment that isn't on the drawings now.
I mean, I love it. My concern is say, what's larger to me compared to the applicant or to you, right? And I, I know it's hard to define, but I think we have to try to put some kind of box around what that larger means.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if that's, like, I don't, I don't know what to, how to do that, right?
I, I, I think, um, the, this is something that we discussed from the beginning and, and we asked, uh, the architect to endeavor to put all the equipment on, on the wells that they created for that purpose specifically. And I think they confirmed that, so larger, I think, would be taller than the parapet that has already been designed, I guess. But we can ask Ron on, on.
Ron, do you want to weigh in on that? I see your hand is raised. Might be raised from the floor.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I didn't raise my hand, but I'll, I'll comment. Um, so the wells that we created in, in the recess spaces on the roof to help, um, conceal any mechanical equipment, uh, will not be visible from the street. The solar panels we strategically placed on the sides that aren't the public-facing sides. And any, um, mechanical units that are in the basement will be in mechanical rooms. The only thing we really don't have control about is, of, was the, um, the electrical transformers that the companies put in, uh, they sort of drop them where they want. And the best we could do is react to it by landscaping around it.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that that may be the source of a, a, you know, the problem if we have these, right now, the electrical transformer is in the back, right? So are you saying that there's a possibility they can put it in the front of the building?
No, what I'm saying, the, the, and Charlie, you can comment on this, because you've done this plenty of times, but there are times when they, you know, you, there's no real interaction with the owner on where they put these things and, um, um, I just want that to be kind of understood that that's something that we don't necessarily have control over.
Okay. So you're saying that you have no interactions with the, from the, from the.
I, I'd like Charlie to comment, because he's, he's more, more an expert on that than I am.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll let Charlie come on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, uh, we won't have any mechanicals in the front. The only thing that might require mechanicals is if the commercial space tenants needs to put a return air or a condenser or something. But we can hide that in the book like a landscape, but everything else, the main transformer will be in the back. And everything else will be on the roof. Though it's just sometimes the commercial tenants, if they're broken up into little spaces, we might need to separate a system, but mainly if it's one big space, we can put it in the back.
Okay, I think, I think that's, I think that's kind of exactly what we're talking about, like, so it's, it sounds like, like individual plumbing vents and things, or like exhaust vents for bathrooms or kitchens. Those are all going to be into some kind of main system and are going to be hidden in the main parts of the roof, right?
Yeah, we could, for the, all the vents, we can put a trunk line for the, um, dry vents and stuff like that that comes down.
Yeah, so.
So no one will see it.
So I think it's when there are those larger pieces of equipment, like what you're talking about, if something has to be basically in the public spaces that have been so carefully designed, those are the things we want to see before they get installed.
Yeah, that, we won't know until we get to that point, like.
Right.
If the space is going to be divided and.
Right.
It might be in ten years, we can't, if we can't rent the space, somebody might only take a thousand square feet and might need to put a little condenser in or something, but they're, they're only at three feet tall by two feet wide. They're not big. So it'd be easy to hide them with a bush.
Yeah, but I, I think the point's still, still valid, right? Uh, the, the, the whole front of, of facing the street was something that was intended not to be the noise and the, and, and, and the visuals of a mechanical equipment. I, I guess I, I would ask Ron, maybe Ron has an opinion on this. I don't know if those, if those mechanical wells have been exhausted already with, 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 with the, you know, the projections? Or if there's any, any, uh, available space maybe left, I, I would say that they should endeavor to leave some, uh, some spare lines to try to put any, any tenant, um, equipment there first and then look into other options, if it's possible.
And the, the thing of it is, is it might never happen.
Yeah, it might never happen and that would be great. That's why we want, uh, that's why we want something in there to say, if it is going to happen, we want to know about it.
Yeah, I mean, all the commercial property I own, I never ran into that, but sometimes if you, we have to subdivide spaces into small spaces, there could be a instant where they might need to put a little condenser or something.
So I think that's when you, so that's when you're going to put into the lease with the commercial usage, folks, that hey, I have this restriction. If you need something bigger than four feet, you're going to let me know so I can bring it back to the planning board, right? You can put that right into your lease. I suggest we put some limits on this, three, four feet.
Yeah, if we do three feet by three feet, or four feet by four feet, and then anything over that, but honestly, I don't think it'll ever happen, but you never know.
I mean, I think we need to define what small and big is, because it's like, what is that story with the three bears and the chairs?
Yeah.
It's kind of like that, like what I consider to be a big bear, you might find.
Like, right, right now, Beth had a lady reach out to me that wants to do a bookstore and a, and a wine tasting shop or something.
Right, but then you could come to us.
Twenty-five hundred square feet, but I mean, right now, the building's going to be new, so we can design it for that.
Okay.
But, you know what I mean, it's, in ten years, when the building's done.
Okay.
And somebody wants to chop up a small space.
We are going, we're, we're going to have to cut that off there, because we have a room full of people now. The only thing, last thing I'm going to say on this before we continue it, is on page seventeen, is that, there's just a little note there about trash pickup. When the trash pickup is made, they're not going to park on Homer Avenue, Homer or Alden, to get the trash that can go into the lot and pick up the trash.
Yep.
Okay. All right, on that, on that note, like I said, we have something else we have to cover for our planning board tonight. We have the select board here staring at us. So we will be, we have room on our agenda, so the, the, our clock on this is March, no, yeah.
Our clock on this, and I've taken care of the mechanical stuff with, with, no pun intended, with Terry, and so, but at the next meeting, hopefully, we can have a, a vote, and we can file it with the clerk's office the next day. So March twenty-ninth, our next meeting is on March twenty-eighth.
Okay, so March twenty, we're continuing this to March twenty-eighth. We should have, we're keeping that meeting as open as we can for as, to try to wrap up some of these things. We have some shorter projects we'll see as well, but we should have plenty of time to see that. We're going to make the modifications that we talked about, Lisa Mead, things like that, and get a copy back to the planning board, again, with those areas highlighted, so that people can keep seeing the, just the changes that we talked about. Right? Questions?
I just, so the ones that we basically approved, agreed with tonight, those should be taken off blue, just to keep.
Those will be taken off blue, only the new stuff. Maybe we'll choose another color. Okay.
Yes.
So thank you to the applicant for joining us, but we do need to officially continue this to the twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion to continue nine forty-nine Homer Avenue site plan and special permit application to March twenty-eighth.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa Venkatesi, aye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzegay.
And Trisha Kendall, aye. All right, we will see you on the twenty-eighth.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Grab a name tag, anybody you want, you want to be tonight, grab a chair. We're going to try to move some of the microphones down, maybe? The rest for the weary. Okay. Before we do anything, do you have everyone here, Rob?
Okay.
Here online, one, two, three, four.
Michael and Jen, we're both going to do it.
You see them? And is the consultant on? Okay. So it's, Rob, you want to open your meeting?
So I'm going to open the select board portion of this meeting, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We're meeting, in a joint meeting with the planning board, and I'll read the, just our boilerplate from the agenda. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestream on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform. Any disruption with our video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestream on Facebook. This is a joint meeting with the Ashland Planning Board, referenced the MBTA community's bylaw discussion, and a possible vote to endorse zoning changes, and that is a bit of a change, I just wanted to make sure people aware that we could potentially vote to endorse this tonight if, if we, if we so decide. And then the other part of the agenda is a comprehensive plan steering committee, precinct one appointment, which I think Michael's been working on. So I'll, so I've opened the select board, and I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair, for the intro.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to give just a really brief intro as to how we got here, for anybody listening who hasn't been following the process. So everyone, I think, understands about the, the MBTA community regulations that were, that came down from the state. We'll get into those, obviously, later in the meeting, and we've described those before. But what this is about is that at some point in the fall, I believe, the joint, a joint meeting of the select board and planning board formed a working group, which consisted of town planner Peter Machek, assistant town planner Alvaro, and then Joe Mignani from the select board and myself, the four of us to kind of, to work on a, a means by which Ashland could fulfill the requirements of the MBTA communities. That was our mandate from the joint boards. So we began that process, looking at a lot of different properties to see what we have, to see what we could use. We had a public forum, I believe it was at the beginning of February, the first one? February sixth, the first one? And so that was held via Zoom. After that meeting, we took the public comments, and we tried to revise our proposal. We had a second public forum, where we needed to add in one more property in order to, in order to make our proposal work, and that's looking at the more complex regulations with the state, not just kind of the, the basic information, I'll call it, that, that's kind of the easier part to understand. So we had a second forum. We presented that at the second forum, again, held via Zoom. We got the responses from that, and based on that, we have the proposal that we were going to, that we're going to bring to the select, the joint boards tonight. That is just kind of the, the really quick version. So where do we want to go from here? Just want to go into Alvaro's presentation?
Yes, we have town planner Peter Machek, thank you so much, and great to have the select board here. But we have two things tonight. Obviously, we have a presentation from Alvaro, Assistant Town Planner, who I will tell you right now has been the backbone to MBTA zoning, and so without Alvaro, we wouldn't be able to be where we are today. I just want to make note of that. And number two, we have RKG Eric, and I'm apologize, Eric, but I'm going to let you pronounce your last name, and not me.
Sure, Wes Sejus.
Thank you so much. So Eric Wes Sejus is from RKG. Previously, just to make a note, in the fall, we did receive a grant from Mass Housing Partnerships, and with that grant, we had consultants, one RKG, our first, and RKG completed economic analysis. And our economic analysis is going to be tied to the amount of inclusionary zoning, excuse me, affordable housing, that we're going to be able to link into our MBTA zoning districts. Second, we were able to work with Emily Inns in the process of developing our zoning bylaws. And so Alvaro and I, or we're, have been working with Emily, along with Attorney Mead, to make sure our bylaws are at a point. They're still, they're, they're, I would probably say, they're, they're complete, and we are going to be in the process of cleaning those up with Lisa and really kind of tightening those up. I think tonight, we're really just to talk about a method of how we got to where we are and the direction that we need to go in. So with that said, I am going to let Eric. Okay, we are going to start off with Eric from RKG. Just to make a note, RKG may be similar to some people at this table. RKG was hired in two thousand and seventeen, and RKG was actually the firm that completed the economic analysis tool that the town used for service. Furthermore, RKG is a subconsultant of our comprehensive plan consultant, J, JG Golson. And so with that said, RKG does know the town of Ashland and has history in the town of Ashland. So with, after that, Eric, I'm going to hand it over to you. You are a co-host. Feel free, share your screen, and please block us through the economic analysis study.
Sure thing. Let's see. Can everyone see that okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for the time this evening. So I'm just going to briefly walk through what the E, the economic feasibility analysis is, why we have to do it, and then I'll go over the results. I'll try to keep this pretty brief and concise, so that we can just leave time for questions, or if you want me to walk through any of the slides. So to start things off, the affordability requirements that EOHLC's compliance guidelines for the multifamily districts has set, they have specifically set those so that municipally, municipalities must require no more than ten percent of units in a project to be affordable at eighty percent of AMI. If you are considering anything above that ten percent, that triggers what's called the economic feasibility analysis, and the simplest way of describing what that is, is it's effectively a pro forma-based model that you would use in any sort of real estate development analysis, and what it's doing is just testing, does your affordability requirements and your zoning cause any barriers to development? And if that is the case, then adding any increased affordability would be deemed economically infeasible, and I'll go into a little bit more of what that exactly means. But just to go over a little bit more about what the EFA is doing, we're looking at construction costs, so design and preparation, the hard cost to build multifamily, the land costs, the acquisition of the land and the physical location. We're also looking at things like financing costs, your debt, debt and equity to pay for the project, marketing, management, property taxes, and then we're also looking at revenues, whether that's from the, the apartments themselves, sale prices, as well as parking revenue. So those are those three sort of main layers to how this model works. I do want to underscore the things that the EFA is not. The whole point of the EFA is to test zoning using a real estate method, so it's really just a policy sensitivity testing tool. It is not an actual site-specific real estate development pro forma. So what I mean by that is, we're not accounting for any actual architectural plans or building specifics, so any of those sort of nuanced costs for a project, a specific project, wouldn't be included in this analysis. Other things like land costs, those are derived from residual land values, since no actual transit, transaction has been made, as well as with the construction hard costs and some of those assumptions around the cost to build. We're using proprietary data sources. We, we have tons of interviews with developers and contractors, but we're not getting actual estimates on an actual project. This is sort of your on-average development conditions, which we then test the feasibility of. And then the final point is interest rates, the financial assumptions, all these things that sort of impact the model, these things change over time, and so this is a point in time, on average, analysis of what type of development is feasible versus what is not, depending on your zoning parameters. So the next two slides, I won't go through every statistic, I'm happy to speak to any of them if anyone has any questions, but we present these in the report, and I'm showing you these here, because EOHLC requires that we submit these tables, just outlining all of the inputs that we use in the model. This is for them to sort of get a sense of where we're coming from as we develop this, and we're testing your zoning and your districts. So again, here's some more statistics. Again, happy to speak to any of these if anyone has any questions. But to kind of get to, to the more results side of this, the three sort of metrics that we think about, when we're thinking about an economic feasibility analysis, is financial return measures. So I have these three referenced on the slide here. Your cash-on-cash, this is the return measure for the amount of cash flow relative to the amount of cash invested. Your return on cost, the simplest way to think about this is just return on investment, and then your IRR, which is your annual growth rate from, that the investment is expected to generate. So we use all three of these return measures to basically determine, if you were to build this type of development, what were, what would the returns be, and do these meet market expectations? If they do, then the zoning, as you have them outlined, would be feasible, or perhaps they may not be, and I, I can demonstrate those in, in the next couple of slides. But to really just sort of sum things up, you know, what does this all mean in, in the shortest sort of phrasing possible? Based on what we looked at in the EFA model, we looked at, if you were to consider instead of ten percent, what if you did a twelve and a half percent set aside at eighty percent of AMI? And what would happen if you did a twenty, or fifteen percent set aside at eighty percent of AMI? And so we looked at these for the rail transit district, the Wildwood mixed-use special district, as well as the Pond Street multifamily overlay district, and the, the sum of the results is, the twelve percent set, twelve and a half percent set aside is financially feasible in your rail transit district, as well as in the Wildwood misused special district, but it is not in the Pond Street mixed, or multifamily overlay district. So it can support no more than the ten percent requirement that the EOHLC has for compliance. And so to kind of show what that looks like, if you look at these tables on the right here, we're showing all those return measures that I was just speaking to, and you'll notice all these different unit counts that we're testing. Those unit counts are derived from your MBTA compliance model, which, if you remember, when you're testing different districts, it renders a final unit count that all of the parcels could, based on the parcels that you use in your district. And so we use those as a set of scenarios to see and sensitivity test, if you were to maximize the units on this parcel, what would happen? If you were to do a little less, what would happen? And if you did a minimal amount, what would happen? And so that's effectively what these different scenarios are showing. And as you can see here with the twelve percent set aside, your return on cost, which is the really important measure, is over six percent, which, from a market expectation standpoint, that is considered financially feasible. And then as you, and the ones in the red here, as you can see, for the Pond Street district, they're not financially feasible, just by a hair, they're in that sort of five percent range. But what we've found from some other communities we've worked in, EOHLC is really paying attention to these, and we've, we've seen that if we say that it could or is on the border, they're going to come back and say that that's, that's not feasible. So that's why we sort of caution at that cutoff at the six percent. And then to kind of show, if you were to go to fifteen percent, as you can see, again, red here in the Pond Street, and then as you can see, by multiple measures, it starts to be a little bit less financially feasible. And again, as we've seen from work in other communities, when it starts to really become infeasible by multiple measures, HLC is going to come back and say, this isn't financially feasible. So we go with the more conservative estimate, and that would be that twelve and a half percent, as opposed to the fifteen percent set aside. For the rail transit and the Wildwood mixed, or multifamily district, or mixed-use district, I apologize, and then for the Pond Street, no more than ten percent is financially feasible. And then I believe that's all I was planning to present, just to kind of give an overview. I wanted to just sort of open it up to questions. I'm also happy to speak to any of the slides I presented, or any of the other pages in the, in the report.
Would it be possible to get that after the fact? It would have been great to have had it before.
Yes, we, we just got it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just get under the gun, it came in. Yeah, no, we have it, and we'll post it.
There's a lot of data to try and summarize.
Yeah, no, no, no.
You summarized it pretty well.
No, I think everyone, we've been on a very tight timeline, and, and so this just came in under the gun, and so we just figured it'd be easier to present it, have it presented, and then obviously circulate it after. Yeah, but we do have a PDF, and we're happy to, but we'll post it on our website, and then we'll send out the link.
Yep.
Are there any questions related to that, Brandy?
So, thank you for the presentation. The numbers are great to, to see. My question is, you know, I know we haven't gone through what we're proposing for, for, for Ashland on the MBTA community side, but have you seen communities split the zoning? Like, because if we decided to do a ten percent afford, if we decided to include Pond Street in the, in, in the new zoning and capped it at ten percent, but then we also wanted to include the rail transit district, could we do twelve and a half percent at the rail transit district and ten percent at Pond Street? Or is it, or is it best practice to have sort of one affordability percentage for the? for the entire bylaw, I guess is my question.
So in my experience, we've seen it both ways. You could have the 10% and then also have the 12.5% or you could just make it a blanket 10, 10%.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Kate?
On the Pond Street mixed-use overlay, the basis for the 10, I think if I read, because there was a lot of information, that it was based on assumption of five stories. But people don't have to build the five stories. So I think we need to have some data. So everyone here knows if we're only asking for 10%, Ashland will never hit the 10%, right? Let's just be clear. We know that. We just want to make that clear. So, and everyone here that I've been on boards and committees with believes in pushing to get affordable housing. Somehow Ashland fell way below and we're at 5. something percent. So if we're going to be changing our zoning, we have to ask for more than 10%. Now I get that there's a requirement. It's not economically feasible. So one is Pond Street and two, I did read surveys. Now I know there are other communities, but like Lexington was able to say, you're good with 15, you might push it to 20. We're not Lexington, but it doesn't cost as much to acquire land here. The rents are very high. We just read a report that they're higher than surrounding communities. So I hope that we have the very best data to help us get to more than 10%.
Well, I'd be curious, why are we different from Lexington?
If I could add one just observation related to that. So when you mentioned the maximum height requirement in the Pond Street district at five stories, this is, this is a challenge that we've had with EOHLC in the past. They require that we test the maximum, the minimum threshold in which affordability is triggered in terms of number of units and then the maximum build-out specifications. Meaning like if you're building in Pond Street, we have to test a five-story building. The challenge there is that right now, construction costs for stick-over podium, which if you're building over four stories, then you need to have podium construction support going up past those four stories. That type of construction becomes incredibly costly. And that's starting to become an inhibitory factor, is those construction costs when you build higher. In the case of Lexington, I'm not quite certain of their height requirements off the top of my head, but in other communities that we've worked, if you have a set maximum height of four stories, that's what we test and that's wood frame construction and then that would work. That's why it works in your other two districts. Why we can't test a project less than that five-story maximum? Because even though it's a max story height, max height of five stories, you technically don't have to meet that max, but EOHLC requires us to test that. We've asked them why, because we experienced this in a couple of other communities and that's just sort of the response that we've been getting.
So we aren't allowed to make, if you build it five stories, sorry, we can't ask for more than 10, but if it's four, we could? I mean, aren't we allowed to do that then? I understand your data that presenting, but can't we ask for a different percentage if someone builds it four stories then?
I think what Eric's saying is that's going against the state in their regulations. And so the state's demanding the test at the five.
The...
I think Eric was going to answer the question.
Yeah, so the way, I say it the way I say it, because you have in your zoning a maximum height of five stories, we have to test that if you're going to submit an EFA to increase the affordability. That's basically the long and the short of it. If you reduced it to four stories or if you added in other language, that's a different story. All I can really speak to in terms of the EFA is we have to test whatever the maximum assumptions are.
So just to follow up, so that what you're saying is then, if we say we're going to put this potential zoning in, but we're going to just make it a requirement of four stories, that would change the cost estimate and we could potentially go above the 10%?
You could then get 12.5 in Pond Street as well, yeah.
Okay.
If we go higher?
No, if we go lower.
If we change the zoning on Pond Street.
Change the zoning on Pond Street to four stories.
We would have to change the zoning for the whole Pond Street overlay district, right? Would that be how it would, I mean, because if we were, we couldn't spot...
So currently in the Pond Street overlay district, it is five stories. And that goes back to when the Pond Street overlay district was adopted to the town. So I think in theory, yes, you'd be changing it for the entire element. And then obviously we're really just creating a zone for 501 and 369. And that's going to be the MBTA overlay Pond Street district. And so what we would have to do there is compress that down to four, which would go from podium construction down to just stick construction, which would be a different...
Which is what we're seeing on Chestnut Street.
Correct.
How would that change our MBTA data though? If, let's say we rezone all of Pond Street to get to the 12.5%, we bring it down to four stories, does that change your analysis for...
I think it just changes what we can ask for affordability.
I think it's, I think it's this, I mean, though the questions are good. For our time tonight, I'm not sure we want to go down this road because when we're looking at the property on Pond Street, of the area that we've allotted there, which we'll see, one of them, one part of the lot, the space is already constructed and the other one is already approved for 501 Pond Street and it's approved at 25% affordable, right?
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure a deep discussion on this is worth our time tonight.
Right, no, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
But is there, are there any other questions for Eric? Because I assume, well, I don't know. I don't know what Eric's time schedule is this evening and we'll be getting into the, you know, Elbro's presentation as well. Any other...
Happy to answer as many questions as you need.
Questions for Eric?
I do have one other little question. So if, when you said that the Pond Street numbers failed, you know, for the affordability and would get rejected by EOS, EOH, EOS...
EOHLC.
Thank you, thank you, the acronym. So if we would write, if we would write a bylaw that we would submit to the state to comply with MBTA communities and it had that, and we, it didn't meet that criteria, the state could reject the bylaw, correct? Is that like grounds for rejection? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other immediate questions for Eric, I'll, I think, Elbro, are you on next?
Yes, I can start presenting. I'll probably turn it over to you to like go through the last approach, but...
So at least we'll have all the information, the big picture and we can discuss it all at one time.
Thank you so much, Eric. Thank you. So this is the same PowerPoint, not the same PowerPoint, but a very similar version of the PowerPoint that we presented last time that we were meeting and also the one that we walked through, the two public discussions. You know, as Erica, we're just kind of like mentioning that the zoning district has to at least be 50 acres and a minimum of those 50 acres has to be within the MBTA buffer. Each individual district has to be at least five acres or greater. So no less than that can just be a standalone district based on the 3A requirements. The minimum density is 15 units per acre. Multifamily, we know age restriction allowed by right. And then districts need to have access to train station that basically all of the town of Ashland has that because of the location of the train station. So basically what the approaches were or like what the information was that it was given to us is that we need to, based on the 2020 census, we have to allocate zoning for 1124 units, 1,124 units. And you know, like the kind of like, as we mentioned from the start, there will be two ways that we could do this. We could go for a very low-density approach where we were trying to maximize area and land and we were trying to like minimize density. And you can kind of like see the numbers there. And then there's also a different approach where you're trying to minimize the amount of land that gets zoned, but then you are looking at the highest amount of density, which will be an average of 20 units per acre. But of course, into that is kind of like what Eric was mentioning. You have to take into account all the zoning differentiations, height, open land, all of those kind of aspects. So you need to like make sure that all of those numbers play around when you're looking at the total land. Because you might think that you have the 50 acres and that is working, but then when you actually look at open land, percentages of that can go away and you need to make sure that the density then plays along. So it's kind of like a trickier game than just, you know, like putting colors in a map and then just deciding what areas will work and what numbers could run. The GIS, I think that you kind of like, seen this before, but just to like redirect it. From the state, we get the samples of GIS data that they tell us how to, at least like navigate the first part of this process. One of them is giving us information about excluded lands on areas that we definitely cannot touch for this exercise and that's due to ownership. So for instances, areas that are owned by the town or the state or there had some sort of like use restrictions, those are areas that the state pre-identify as they are not practical or possible for us to use. So from the start, we did not look at those parcels. Sensitive land is areas that we do can use for the MBTA. The only thing is that for these areas, they're going to be red flagged. So it doesn't necessarily mean a negative thing. It just means that when you're looking at those areas in a map, you have to know that there might be an extra cost due to its location, due to its geographical features. So most of it, you can see that is near like river fronts or anything like that because of the float zone. And that's why it's kind of like shown as sensitive land. And then the density denominator, these are, I want to say a little similar in the sense that it could be due to geographical impacts or geographical features that it impacts it. But the main thing is that for the exercise, you cannot count these towards the total number of land. So let's say if you pick any parcel here that has the light brown area, you will have to decrease that from your total number of land. But you can still count it for, and that will be deducted to the density. So when you're doing your density exercise, then that parcel is going to be impacted for how much of the brown space is basically taken. So if you have a parcel of one acre and you have a brown space of 0.3 acres, you can only use 0.7 to actually like measure the density. Yeah, and I think I can turn it on to Tricia so she can walk over the T district itself.
Yeah, so this goes back to just our kind of continuing analysis about how we approach these sites. First, we had general discussions about all kinds of areas across Ashland that included obviously the big chunks of the rail transit district, but as well as other properties around Ashland, some of which have projects the planning board has recently approved on them, such as C is 100 Chestnut Street, D is, D is 501 Pond, right? And its neighbor. But E is the Kidde Fenwall lot we are considering. Obviously, we're considering Area C, which is part of the area between, near the train station along Pleasant Street. And we're considering a couple other places as well that we kind of just ultimately decided we couldn't use because part of it was town property or it was just way out of the zone or inappropriate use. So where we, the second part of our thoughts in looking at this, we actually entailed a couple of things. One is that as we've gotten feedback from members of our community that, hey, Ashland has already done a lot as far as housing and the planning board knows this a lot, right? About permits, you know, projects that we've permitted, as long, as well as Cirrus, that has been a while now. But you know, we've already, we've already as a town added a lot of housing, you know, to Ashland over the past 10 years or so. So we were conscious of that. And then we were also conscious that we have a comprehensive plan process in the works right now. And so we wanted to be careful about making decisions for the town when the town, meaning the residents and the public, were in the process of making decisions for ourselves, for the larger group. So we took both of those things into consideration and we really started to focus on land that we have already built on. That either it's already built like Cirrus or it is already approved to be built on like the 501 Pond Street or not GCG, G...
UGC.
UGC, these initials, right? Or UGC, which is the over 55 community in that district. So we were, we were basically landing on four pieces of property to make the numbers work. And as Elbro was going through all those different kinds of land exclusions and it has to do with the current zoning, there's a lot of information to put in so that it spits out, yes, it's approved or no, it's not, right? And so those ended up to be Cirrus, UGC, 100 Chestnut Street and 501 combined with the... 369, which is the memory care facility next door. It's already built. But those two properties together, because we have to have a five-acre minimum for any parcel to count and 501 Pond was too small. So we focused on those four properties, which with minor tweaks in the zoning to get them to fulfill the requirements, all of the units that we needed, all of the acreage that we needed, basically hit those properties or are fulfilled by those properties, which with our feedback from our two forums, which granted, I mean, maybe we had 20 people around on our each forum. Granted, isn't a mandate from the people or anything like that. But the four, the people seemed to be appreciative that we were keeping it to things we've already done, at least at the present time. So that was, that is what we are now delivering to the joint boards as where we have landed after this however many month endeavor.
Thank you. Is that the, your presentation? Anyone else?
Happy to answer questions. That's the information that we have for you.
Questions or comments from folks?
I have a question. So I know we've said this before, but we didn't say this tonight, that the 1,100 and change units that we, 1,124 units that were zoning to have built, it's a really just a zoning exercise. We're not really building 1,124 units. And MBTA communities is not saying we have to build these units. It's really just saying we have to zone to be able to build by right for these, correct?
That's right. And that's to be, something obviously, it always came up at the forums and something we made clear, that none of this mandates that a single unit is built. It's just has, you have to have the possibility that it can be built. And you can also designate that land on property that is already built. But that's, that's okay too. In fact, I think many communities, I think, take that approach when they're in the situation we are, so.
So my other, one other question that I had, because we had some feedback about Pleasant Street, which I think is not in this seed, but it's a different seed.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So if I saw that chart, right, it's like 6.09 acres, that parcel that you guys took a look at. If, and I'm saying if, we were to include that in the zoning, what would the density, what, how many units could that potentially add to Ashland? Because I think we need to also understand, if we do change any zoning for what we approve for MBTA communities, from what you guys are recommending, that there would be an impact, because this would be by right and there would be an impact that we, you know, to town services and potentially, you know, development that we would not have a say in as far as the planning board. It wouldn't come to the planning board. So I'm curious, do we know what that...
I think by right still comes to us.
It still comes to...
Site review is by right.
It comes through site plan approval processes.
But it wouldn't be anything that you would negotiate as far as unit...
Right.
Unit size, those types of things that we're talking about.
I think the, so if that, is that, that's, it's about six, that area that we're considering?
Yeah, I think it was...
Yeah. So at six acres, 15 units an acre, which is a minimum, it's 90 units. So that would be, you know, in that area, that would be, that's what we would have to buy right minimum for that area.
Okay.
Can I just kind of confirm, on the reverse, if we don't zone that area by right, the developer can still come in with a special permit to build density.
That's, that's correct. Yeah.
So, and I think that's an important point, because we're not zoning to prevent development. Dense development can always be proposed anywhere in our community with a special permit project. I just want to make sure that's clear to the public.
That, that specific process is far and beyond the by right. It takes a lot longer, and it's a little bit more expensive to the, to the individuals. So that should be also added to that comment as well.
That's interesting.
I have yet to see the planning board deny a special permit project.
I just had a couple of comments here. You know, so one, I guess, on some level, I'm confused by what our goal is, because on, on one hand, we're talking about, let's increase the number of affordable units we can build. And then on the other hand, we're saying, well, we're going to permit this, but we're, we might not ever build, right? So, you know, and, and I understand pros and cons, and I'm not suggesting where I even come down on between those two things, but they, they seem like they're at odds with one another.
I, I think they, I, I think it's just exploring, to me, it's just exploring all avenues of the development as if there was nothing there, and then 12.5% would be better than 0% affordable, or better than 10% affordable. But yeah, I think right now, I mean, of the two, and, and granted, anything can happen, just because projects are approved, that doesn't mean they're getting built, right? But the two approved projects that are currently still with an empty site are both at 25% affordable, right? So, but, but they're not there. That's right. So, yeah, so it does seem a little bit at, at odds. It's just kind of the, it's kind of the, yeah, the timeline that we're on, I guess.
Yeah. And then I, I think, you know, to Anna's point, you know, when we talk about Pleasant Street, and we talk about the property that's adjacent to the station, you know, it does make sense to, to build housing there for, right? It does seem like you can walk to it, right? And, and while I say, okay, well, you know, but maybe, I mean, that can happen anyways, but sometimes if we let stuff happen anyways, when it comes before the planning board, and you all can't come to an agreement with the developer, we end up with a 40B project.
Well, 40B is, is a leadership thing to set in place to try to meet 10%, right? That's not controlled by the planning board. I mean, we have to set a plan.
Well, no, it is if, if you're negotiating, right, with a, with a developer, and the developer gets frustrated and walks away, that's when they come back sometimes, right?
If we had 10%, they wouldn't be able to do 40B.
Right, but.
Right, if we had 10% of housing, of affordable.
Right, but we don't.
I think there's always.
Can I go back to respond to one of her, your, your comment about the zoning and building?
Yeah.
The, the idea here, because I've, I've, I've also been conflicted about that. It's like, okay, we have to create the zoning, but we don't actually have to build it. And I think what the state is trying to do with this zoning is have the ability that should someone want to come in and build it, they have the right to do that. And they're not telling us we have to build it, but we have to have the ability for someone to come in.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm thinking, what do we want? Never mind. I mean, I understand what the state's kind of forcing.
Right.
But ultimately, what is it that we want?
Well, and that's why.
Claudia, I think, if I could.
Go ahead.
I, I think, I think I know what you're saying, I think. And the way I look at it is, I feel like Ashland has already done what the state wants. And I think, because I think what you're identifying is a tension. Hey, we want more affordability, then why are we just zoning where we already built? So it feels like a disconnect. But to me, it feels like the same thing, because essentially, to me, Ashland has gone above and beyond. If you drive around to other communities, we have already done it. So we're not the reason the MBTA law exists. I think for other communities that need to get there, they should catch up to us.
Right, I, I agree. And then, but then in reality, to, to Ms. Gonfrady's point in her email about, you know, the fact for comparing to Southborough, and what Southborough is responsible for doing, well, because their lower density, you know, the way they're automatically have, have less responsibility. It's, you know, again, the state, the way this is written, it does, it penalizes communities who have done some work. Not to say we're perfect, but we've done some work, right? So that, that, you know, it's my editorial comment, I suppose.
Right, the more work you've done, the more dense you've become, the more punished you feel.
Right.
Which is why if we zone to the areas where we've already developed, we're less punished.
Yeah, yeah. Again, but is it still enough?
At least that's one perception. I'm not saying we're being punished.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Some people believe we are.
And then my last question, just, and I'm not suggesting that, that we do any, go down this road, really, but I'm curious. What, do we know what it would cost us if we were not to do what the state is telling us to do? What, what would be the actual grants that we would lose? You know, I, I know Milton is, you know, got all that publicity, and I think theirs was $100,000 in that particular.
So I can stop you right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read them right now, right?
Yep.
Number one, MassWorks. Number two, Housing Choice. Number three, Local Capital Project Funds. Furthermore, planning, community planning grants from the EOHLC, Massachusetts Downtown Innovation Grants, Urban Agenda Grants, Rural and Small Town Development Grants. Please note, Ashland does not qualify for either a rural, I mean, for a rural or small town development grant. We are greater than, I believe the threshold is 7,500 population, a population size of 7,500.
So to follow up from Claudia, what you've just read, right, are the, are potential grants you can no longer apply for?
So which is an important point, and.
Correct.
But what, do you have a ballpark numbers of what, I realize there might be a huge range there?
MassWorks, we have what, almost, we've almost had, no, almost 12 million, right? We had MassWorks.
So it's a significant, it's a huge punishment, right?
I would say that MassWorks, I would, I would, I agree with Yolanda. Can I put a number on it? No. However, this town of Ashland has received in the range of 12 to 15 million dollars in MassWorks grants, I would say, over the last few years.
Okay, so it's, it's a huge number. It's not $100,000 that we're at, at risk.
Correct. I just want to make a note, Michael does have his hand up. Michael may have a.
And Marcelo does, does as well. So Peter, I'll let you.
Michael, well, Marcelo, do you want to add to the conversation?
Sure. I just, just, just listening to the conversation, it, it's more, and, and again, that's everybody that has worked deeply in, in this subject, it's a lot better versed than, than me. But it, the conversation about those areas adjacent to the station just made me think, and I think was Yolanda that, that mentioned, what, what, why is that not included? And, you know, I, I get all the, the control versus not control if it's a self-right. However, it, it seems to me that it, I have more like a philosophical kind of overview of this. The, the, the overall objective of this effort by the state is to incentivize and to generate housing close to the train stations, for obvious reasons. That area on, on Pleasant Street, I, I, I agree, I don't know who said it, but I, I, it seems to me that, that, that by, by not including that, or for whatever reason, we're almost just trying to comply with the mandate, just by, by, by going around in circles and, 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 you know, matching, checking the boxes, which is fine. It's one way to do it. But if, if, I, I guess I would just question, are, are we not really committed of developing density in downtown close to the station? Because it, it seems to me that that whole area on, on Pleasant Street and adjacent to the station should be, by default, is, is, is a prime candidate to, to fulfill that, if that's really what we feel. So I just wanted to make that comment.
I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, as somebody who takes that stop, like I, I park my car at the Cirrus side, and I take that train ride back and forth, right, if I don't go to the West Natick stop. But what I'll tell you is, we have complied. We do have dense housing right next to the train station on the Cirrus side. And by not having on both sides, we're not somehow escaping responsibility. We have a lot of density on, right next to the train station at Cirrus. And there's a, and there's a beauty to some control for us as to what happens on the other side. Because on the other side, you're very close to downtown, and nothing prevents a developer from coming in and proposing density on the other side. But to do it by right means, Marcelo, that you would not be able to, as a planning board member, have some say in certain characteristics that might make it more consistent with your downtown vision that I know you have. And so, nothing prevents developers from trying to build dense on the other, on the other side, but it is much closer to downtown, and we, as a planning board, should have some say through special permit.
We have a, Marcelo, do you want to finish, and then I'm gonna let Michael have a, have a chance? Go ahead, Marcelo, sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna say, I, 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 I never said that we were trying to skirt responsibility.
Yes.
So let's not say what I didn't say. But I, I'm just saying that, that the downtown by default has a form code that allows people to build by right, certain things that everybody has agreed is proper for, for the downtown. Why would that not be able to be, to, to take place there?
I, I think those, the, you would have to be, I'm not sure about that. If it's in the downtown zoning district, would they still have to, would, would new construction in that area as a, as a by right have to follow downtown zoning district regulations?
I'm sorry.
Would it have to follow form-based code?
Yes.
Like, it would?
So if we're coming in, if we're gonna make an amendment, and so this hasn't been done yet, and just by the way, because we didn't go down this road within, obviously, our working groups and, and our public forums, right? We started to think about this, but yeah, you would, any building within the ADDA district is gonna have to be fall under this, under the ADD requirements. Yes.
So it would be by right, but with the ADD zoning requirements?
Correct.
Okay.
However, this is the thing, right, is that we would still, we would have to change the ADD, the ADD, the Ashland Downtown Zoning District, to make sure it complies with all of, all elements.
Of the, of the MBTA communities.
MBTA legislation. So there's things that we may have to go back and start changing.
Is Section C that's showing on this map downtown?
No.
No, that's 100.
No, no, on, so on this map.
Yes.
On the old one.
So the southern side of Pleasant Street.
Southern side of Pleasant Street.
Is ADDA.
Yeah.
Is an overlay district.
So that's considered downtown?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh.
In terms of the, our zoning, downtown zoning district.
Zoning, yes.
Okay.
ADDA.
ADDA, the southern side of Pleasant Street, running from the down, running from Main Street.
All the way to the station.
ADDA is an overlay district, and it covers 10 to 60 Main Street. There's some sections in the downtown, and then it runs the entire southern, southern side of Pleasant Street, which is to, to the train station. The underlying zoning in that district is industrial, right? So when ADD was adopted, they created ADDA as an overlay district. ADD sections B and C are base zoning, one would say.
Okay. I just want to, excuse me, I just want to make sure I understand, because we talked about that Zone C being right by the, the station, and that's been subject to some discussion, but you're saying that's controlled by ADD, A, D, D, A, all the way, all the way to downtown, and they all have to have the same conditions? So you can't, you couldn't separate out Zone C and put it by itself?
Well, we could, but we're saying what it is right now.
Okay.
But anyway, before we go too far.
Yeah.
Here, I, I want to go to Michael Herbert, who's been waiting.
And that's just the zoning map, so it's a little more clear.
Yeah, that's good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I just want to provide, go back to Claudia's question, and provide a little bit of context on the grants. So first of all, the, probably the biggest one is obviously the MassWorks grant. So we so far have secured just slightly under $10 million in MassWorks grants to support infrastructure projects, including downtown, over the last 10 years. Another one that we've received is the Commonwealth Places Grant, which helped support the Corner Spot, which was about $50,000. And then I believe the last one you read off Pete was the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, if I, if I'm correct.
I didn't get the, I didn't finish all the grants, I'm sorry.
So it's a lot of grants.
Yeah, so I believe that totals, what we've been able to secure is $100,000 through, through that program. And one thing I want to make clear is that some of these are planning grants, and while the, the numbers might be smaller, like the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program, those might be smaller. What they do is if you complete those, and you complete the planning through those grants, it makes you eligible for larger grants for construction. And I don't have exact figures for, right in front of me, but like with the Housing Choice Grant, which we would also be ineligible for, that goes up to $250,000. So, you know, I, I don't want to say it should be the only factor in consideration when you're determining what you want to do here, but there is some significant financial implications that are on the table.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
All right, I went to give Amanda, Amanda a chance to come on.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Amanda Walsh, Pine Hill Road. I've been on a couple of these meetings, and I'd first like to thank everyone.
Hold on just a minute, Amanda. Sorry, yeah, I was thinking it was the other Amanda, my mistake, but I was gonna open it up to public comment when we get done with this.
Sure.
So, sorry, Amanda, you, you can go ahead.
Okay. I've been on a couple of these meetings, and I first like to thank everyone involved. I know you guys have worked really hard on this. And I really like this plan, and I just wanted to, you know, say that from a resident's perspective. I think that this plan has a great chance of passing at town meeting, too. There have been quite a few people who have come out and said that, you know, they don't want more density in town, and I think in order to get their support, this approach is a great one, and has a good shot, you know, at potentially passing at town meeting. I strongly personally disagree with including Pleasant Street. You know, we have already developed other areas, you know, on this plan, and would like to see the comprehensive plan be completed or further along before we include land that is not already developed. I'd also like to, you know, leave Pleasant Street open to give planning board feedback if somebody comes in and, you know, developer wants to develop that land. You know, lastly, I think before this goes to town meeting, residents need to be informed on, you know, this is a zoning change, and I think that's a huge misconception. I think a lot of people think like, oh, if you, you know, if this passes at town meeting, that we're gonna build all this housing, and that's not the case. And by, you know, keeping the plan with, you know, current housing that's already been developed, and if we can get that message across, I think that, you know, this would pass more easily. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Amanda. And at this time, I do want to take a few minutes to open it up for public comment.
Can I just make a statement before we go to that?
Okay.
Thanks. So I did want to thank you folks on the subcommittee for all this hard work. And I did, and I think it's a very good plan, and in terms of, you know, passing, I think we understand that we can do this with relatively little impact. But I do, I did want to point out that I think we're missing an opportunity here. And I, I understand Anna's point about being possibly able to have a developer come in and use the Zone C, but if, you know, but, and also the idea of waiting for a comprehensive plan to make that decision. But I would remind everybody, this is a public process. This will go to town meeting. This is elected officials talking about the plan. So I think procedurally, if we feel that, and I personally think that we're missing opportunity in Zone C, because it really is, it's right by the train station. It's already developed. That whole area is already developed. So we're kind of missing opportunity to build, you know, to add to housing. And one of the ways you get housing more affordable is to build more housing and build it in the proper place. This is the proper place. This is the rail transit district. This is why we have a commuter rail station. That's why they passed this law. So I think you suggested some very good things here. I think we can live with this, but I think we're missing this opportunity. And I think it's across the street from Pleasant Street, okay, but it's not, that's, it's not in a neighborhood. It's already developed. it's not in a neighborhood, it's already developed, uh, so I think we should look closely at that, and I think this committee ought to, um, consider taking a very close look at including that. I, I doubt that a planning board in the future is going to feel, uh, and who knows what they'll, what they'll feel, but the idea that they're going to allow housing to be built that's not already zoned and permitted, I think is, is really unlikely. Um, and that's not the best process, anyway. The best process is this process, where we're talking about it and we're going through a very public process. So I would, um, again, my thanks for all you, you folks' effort, I would just, um, my personal position, we ought to look very closely at including Zone C, uh, to see if that's feasible, um, and fits with, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this time I will open it up to public comment, we'll go with our usual, um, our usual specifications on that, which are three, three minutes per person, one time to the mic. I'll let you manage, Peter.
Do you say three minutes?
Three minutes, Danny, yeah.
My wife, Dan GiGiari, from Burnhams in Ashland. I run, own Burnhams, it's been on our family for, since 1938. The process of putting the MBTA station in back started in 1992, it was never completed in 2000, until 2002. During that time, the initiative of putting some dense housing in the area, the proposal most, by Bob Gaynor mostly, he wanted to put 750 units up on that hill. It ended up to a 398. I thought that was a pretty good compromise. And I was pretty much instrumental, my wife and myself, because we thought that's a good idea, to have people near the train station. In lieu of that, instead of having 750, the negotiations ended up, as you know, a 398, but then at the top, they made some concessions to have, I believe it's age restricted, and I believe that's under litigation right now. I tell you, if you change that, Bob Gaynor is not going to let that go. He's going to go full-fledged to try and get as many units as he can up there, that has been what he's tried to do over the years. Now, Anna says that we've done our part. I was part of that, big part of it, and I supported it. We're looking for a little support on our two acres, and all I hear is, we can't do that. There's no discussion as to the, the logic of the law, as, as Rob just stated, the law was there for a reason. It's not as if this whole thing's going to come flying apart if Pleasant Street gets included in this way, in some way, shape, or form. Marcelo did the same thing. This is the first night I've heard both Rob and Marcelo to step up to the plate and say what they think. And I've watched every meeting on here, I haven't been able to attend them because, uh, well, I took a night off tonight and closed, so I could come down, because I think it's important. Uh, as an example, I was just doing my taxes, my, I was doing my mileage report, I have a thing in my pocket for my cellphone, Mile IQ, and it records all my trips. My entire trip, both business and personal for 2023, was 2,907 miles. The average in Massachusetts is 13,500, and that's what this is trying to prevent, getting people off of the roads, and there's no discussion about this. There's no discussion about pollution, no discussion about energy savings, all of it's, we're going to do everything we can to avoid, and it's been publicly stated, the board members have said, this is a good job, because we've avoided a net zero of any new apartments coming in, or any new housing coming in. I disagree with that, if that's the road it goes down, I am going to push back against it as best I can. You might win, but I suppose the district attorney will finally make that final decision as to whether the meeting was appropriate or not. I don't, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, but in May 30th, the town got a letter from the moratorium that was rejected, and she stated right within that letter that, uh, this law is an important part of Massachusetts to provide housing. And someone just pointed out, the, the answer to affordable housing is more units. Now, it doesn't mean it has to be out of control, but our two acres, that's not going to change the world, and I've never seen so much resistance on such a simple premise. My wife probably has more to say than myself. That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Do you want to jump to someone online, or?
Hi, Lorraine GiGiari, Burnhams Restaurant. I'd like to thank you, Rob, for your comments, it was so important to hear that. Um, I'd like to say that, you know, pre, prior to the previous, um, public zoning meeting, we sent a letter to the planning board, and we asked it to be shared with all the board members, and we asked if someone could please read it during the public meeting, because we would have to close our restaurant to attend. Unfortunately, the letter was acknowledged, but it was decided that it was just too long to read, it would have taken about four minutes. So, in the meantime, all the participants at the Zoom meeting got to speak more than once with no time limits, and ironically, most of the conversation was specifically about us, or the street we live on. So, they got to be heard, um, and there was praise, praise for all the new voices that participated in the process, yet the one person who's lived here for 70 years didn't get to be heard. So I'm hoping tonight, to read the letter, it's changed a little bit. Be with me, it should take a few minutes. Okay. And I'd like to bring up a different point that I don't hear talked about, which is traffic in Ashland. Our business, at our business, the most common complaint we hear about Ashland is the traffic. Rail transit zoning should alleviate traffic. So however, recent developments in permitted projects address this problem, a few examples. Chestnut Street, which you included in your option, 29 units per acre in a residential neighborhood, these occupants need to drive through downtown or along 135 to access the train. Homer Ave, also 29 units per acre. While we support the idea of a walkable community and hope this makes the downtown more vibrant, we suspect most of these residents that would like to access the train will drive rather than walk a mile, again, through the downtown 130, or 135 traffic congestion. And third, Ashland Woods, which is next to TJ's. This one is also in a residential area and appears to be 29 units per acre. Their website advertises a community amenity, one mile from the commuter train, train station, but to access the amenity requires adding to the traffic on 135. Yet here we are at Burnhams with a very similar-sized property to Ashland Woods, but with the great amenity of stepping out your door and hopping on the train. I can tell you that from living at Burnhams, when I also had a Boston walking tour business, it was such a privilege to have a train at my doorstep. But somehow, the town boards refused to consider us as a potential for rail transit use. And unlike other projects in residential neighborhoods, our property is surrounded by an MBTA parking lot, with the closest neighbors being a daycare center and Cirrus Apartments. One more point about traffic. We also provide commuter parking on our property. Before COVID, we had 130 parkers, it is much less now, but have seen a 50% increase just this year, especially recently. I can tell you that currently, 55% are from Ashland, while the other 45% travel to Ashland from other towns, Hopkinton, Southborough, Milford, Hope Dale, Holliston, Hudson, Marlborough, and Framingham. Apartments here could deplace, displace some of that local traffic. Also, the comparison to Milton's complaint that the MBTA is not providing the transportation the community needs, so that people are driving into Boston, is not relevant to our rail line with such an increase in riders. Now, I'd like to make one presentation, new option, add the 12 acres on Pleasant Street that was removed from the original presentation. Observations from the last forum, board members do not think it will be right to include this area because it would negatively impact the residents on the north side of the street, with one member referring to this as very dense. Yet the planning board presentations claim 15 units per acre is low density. Also, forum participants from outside the area are opposed, but I'd like to know, has anyone who actually lives on Pleasant Street responded? Okay, here's a plan. Since area A and B are now 39.62 acres after removing the 20 acres, you could add the 12 acres on Pleasant Street to equal the 50 acres required. Then you could make Burnhams lot a subzone with a higher density. Hisse math, 12 acres times 15 UPA minimum equals 180 units total. Burnhams subzone, 1.9 acres times 29 UPA equals 55 units. The balance of 125 units for the remaining 10 acres equals 12.5 UPA. Regarding subzones, I was told at town hall that you can't do that. However, the state guidelines say this, quote, "Please note that communities can manage density on a sub-district level. Lower-density subdistricts can abut existing neighborhoods or natural resources, while higher-density subdistricts can be farther away. As long as your average district density is greater than or equal to 15 UPA, your bylaws should be compliant." Also, there is a similar statement in Ashland's Section 3A overview. By the way, much of that is owned by the church. Do you really think the church or the daycare center will go out of business and build apartments? Final thoughts, we understand the sentiment of the boards as well as residents who do not want more apartments, it's too much change, but given the small size and ideal location of our property, we believe there is no better place for apartments. We understood the walkable community concept back in 2000 when the station was built and the Cirrus Apartments were proposed, and were happy to be included in the Ashland Downtown District rezoning several years later. At the combined board meeting in, on November 15th, one board member asked, what about Burnhams? Another said, it's not part of this with specific density by right, so we have more control over those types of projects. In what way does the town plan to control us? This property means everything to us. And I'd like to add one more comment from tonight, um, I could say a lot about it, but I'll just simply say, the special permitting process you're talking about will benefit a developer who can wait it out and spend lots of money after many years. It does not help a property owner zoning by rightward. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I'm going to go to some people who have been waiting online, Peter, can you manage that? Yes, uh, thank you so much. So the first up, uh, first person with a hand up, um, and Mark, I will come to you next, uh, but is Alex Keef. Alex, I am asking you to unmute.
Hi, guys, thank you, Alex Keef over on Pine Hill Road. First off, I'm, I'm glad I could hear what they had to say about Burnhams. Uh, I just want to point a couple things out. I, I'm dead set against us including Pleasant Street on the plan. Um, I can speak from personal experience and working for the town for many years. Uh, the traffic congestion on there is unbearable as it is, your average time triples during a heavy commuting hours, and when we were talking about redoing Main Street, it was discovered that the traffic plan was done in the midst of COVID, uh, producing very low numbers, because everyone was at home. Um, as it stands right now, increasing stuff, uh, traffic coming down into that area. Um, I know when talking to the DPW many years ago, the bridge at Pleasant and Cordville needs to be replaced, it's long overdue, and I know that's a battle with the state, who's responsible for it. Hearing that, you know, we're talking about 45% of people going to the woman from Burnhams or traveling from outside of town to come in, I see that number getting higher, if not doubling, because people still have to travel from High Street and from, uh, the northern side and southern side of town, and from the southern side of Southborough, or the south side of Framingham, where it overflowed. So we're, we're still going to get an influx of people coming into town, even if we were to build on Pleasant Street, that, that's not going to go away by any stretch. Um, the other concern is, people are going to start using Winter Street as a cut-through. I know that we've already had to gate off the back in the Winter Street to cause people to go around, because they were using it as a cut-through. Uh, there's already heavy traffic being pushed out on the Strovis Lane, in that area, with people cutting through, trying to skip the traffic that is already on Pleasant Street. So, I'm saying, keep that off. Uh, I understand what the, the family from Burnhams is saying, but I, I think we're, we're doing well by keeping Pleasant Street off the dock and on this one, to try to decrease the traffic congestion that we already have going into downtown, because you go down there at 8 o'clock in the morning while the buses are going, it could take you 15 to 20 minutes to get through downtown, and you can see just a sea of cars going down Pleasant Street, so I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I'm going to come to the next, uh, person in our public comment, and that is in the room, Mr. Mark DeSoni, can you please step up to the podium?
Thank you, Mark DeSoni, 49 Hawthorne Road. I have a concern and a comment, and then a question. The concern is, has this T station had a, ever built, um, parking lot sold out in the years it's been here?
Uh, yes, I've seen it.
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID. Completely full.
Okay. The, uh, concern, the, the comment is, um, what's the goal, if there is one for the MBTA, this, the zoning, the housing zoning, what's the goal at the end of this, if it passes through, if it does pass?
More housing.
More housing.
Plain and simple.
And more, and more affordability.
And more, yeah.
Question. Semi-traffic? More, more housing, more people? Does the state have a percentage of being built out for this town?
I don't think the state has a build-out number for us. I think the, what they're trying to do with this MBTA zoning is increase of the availability of potential housing. I know we, as a community, are looking at our build-out based on, as part of our comp plan and other times, but I don't think the state has a build-out number, and it's certainly not going to be based on the MBTA zoning.
And for the MBTA zoning to have, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence either way, I'm not Milton wise, I'm not Ashland wise, but I'm going to just listen to everything that comes out of it, because I don't take the T, I don't, I live in my own house already. And I'm saying that this board, boards, has got to hear what the state has to then get more legal zoning, and, with the change of zoning that is coming up, will this, is this zoning going to have to go through the town meeting bylaws?
Yes.
And how, and how would the vote have to come out, two-thirds or unanimous?
No.
I think it's just.
It's a simple majority vote.
Yeah.
A simple majority. So we're going to be seeing that down the road, and then hoping that people will realize that it's going to be working for housing, but can the, the school handle more education? I had to look at it from the outside of the box, too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSoni. Next public comment is going to come via Zoom. Joan Confrate, I am asking you to unmute.
Yes, thank you. First, um, I think, thank you for, thank you all for your hard work. Obviously, this has not been, you know, I'm exhausted, so I can only imagine how exhausted you are, just trying to, just trying to comprehend it all. I, as, as I don't think there's any secret that I wish that the towns had banded together. What I feel is the state made your overreach, and I think it's wrong. But having said that, I do think that the plan that you have in front of you is the best plan for the town. I think that, specific sites aside, like the Jajaris, which I, which I feel for, I think that right now, that the town is at a tipping point. And I think that our schools, our water and sewer, we just can't afford more. We need to take a breath, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, and reassess and see what, what, what we can really accommodate in this town forward-going. I think we're, if not, if not built out, I, that would be interesting numbers to know. I think we're pretty close, close to what we can, our capacity for, based on our services. So, thank you again for your time, and I appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Joan. With that, that ends public comment.
So, just to think about, I mean, it's 10 to 10. Nothing unusual for the planning board. But, so, but we do have to figure out, we have to figure out a path forward, no matter what that is. Because as we started this process, our goal was always to, hey, can we make Springtown meeting? That was a goal. On our current path, the answer is yes, we can make Springtown meeting. So, I think that's a question of whether that's still important to us, or if there's more discussion that has to be had. I, I'm not sure, but it seems like if we're making changes in what we're proposing, that might automatically mean fall.
Yeah, I can take it, I can just, you know.
Hold on just a second. So, I just want to, like, I think that's, in a way, that's a level of decision we need to understand, understand tonight. And we need to understand the implications of that. Let me let Peter put his thought in about scheduling.
Yeah, just from, from a time management, obviously, we're always on a tight timeframe coming through this process. The way everything is set up right now and the trajectory of the bylaws, it does not include Pleasant, it does not include Pleasant Street. We are there. We have the edits, we, you know, to the bylaws. We have everything rolling through. We have, obviously, our compliance model data all set up, ready to roll with our texts being reviewed by Lisa Mead and through this process, right? We, the planning board, right, have to have a public hearing on all zoning bylaws. I have to have that posted and advertised, right? If we are going to make changes, I would suggest that we take the six months and we go to a Fall Town meeting. Now, with that said, and I know there could be, there could be questions. I will say, it is happening right now that as bylaws are being drafted, bylaws are also being submitted by communities to the state for review, right? And so, you are taking some of that process, you'd be taking some of that process out regarding, not some of the process out, but regarding some of the risk if the AG is going to accept the bylaw out if you're getting your bylaws reviewed prior to adoption. Does everyone understand what I'm saying?
But if we go to May, there won't be a chance for review.
Correct. Because we're under the timeline, right? We are doing our best with Town Council, who has been, who represents, as you know, Rob, many cities and towns in Massachusetts, right? And so, she is going through the process and highlighting things that we may have to change, along with our consultant, who's done the same exact thing, right? So, they're reviewing it, and they think we're in a pretty good place. And I think we're in a very good place, right? And I will say, we do have some of the building blocks, and thank you to the town of Ashland, that rezoned this RTD district in 2003. And I will state that the town of Ashland did grow by 10% and added 800 units between 2010 and 2020. Fun fact. However, to go back to the bylaws and the trajectory we were on, if we are going to change elements of what we proposed, I think we're most likely going to, we should most likely shoot for a Fall Town meeting.
So, could we comment on the public comments we've heard and maybe figure out if we are feeling a consensus of sticking to the draft as is or changing it?
Please, yeah.
So, I have to say, I'm very appreciative of the comment from the Burnham owners. I, I understand the passion, especially in light of the fact of how supportive they were over their history here of bringing more density to that area. And I'm trying to kind of make, make peace with their position and what I'm hearing from the public and my personal comfort with the plan as drafted. I don't think we need to redo it. And I think where I'm landing is, I am not confident that this MBTA rezoning is the right mechanism to respond to your concerns. And what I mean by that is, right now, I believe you can build density of 10 per acre where you are. The MBTA zoning would push that density way higher, probably into the 20s, if I understand this correctly. Probably even higher than that, right? We would be.
Why wouldn't it be 15?
It could be 15.
It could be 15. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Just to confirm, so is that correct? They could build now at 10 units per acre?
So, ADDA applies. And so, if anybody came along, and I'm not going to pinpoint Burnham's, I'm going to say any property on, if any property on Pleasant Street comes in, right? They can use the Ashland Downtown Ovalay District A as their permitting mechanism.
And they can do 10?
Yes. Yeah.
And in doing 10, they're also being consistent, like, right now, you can propose 10 with the ADD district. And I'm just looking at the documentation from 2021, three years ago, when this went through town meeting. So, very, very recently, the town of Ashland placed on that property the ADD restrictions, including the 10 per acre. That's very, very recent. A few years later, through a very different mechanism to change it to higher density doesn't feel like the right approach. I would feel more comfortable with that being proposed to the Steering Committee of the Comprehensive Plan and exploring whether we can push higher density in a more thoughtful way that is consistent with all the work that was done through the effort, what is it, three years ago? Very, very recently. So, that, that was one comment I was going to make. And then the other comment is, even if it's 10 now, you could have a special permit for more. And again, I have yet to see the planning board deny any special permit. This planning board.
Peter, do you want to unmute Michael?
Michael is a co-host. Michael, please unmute yourself.
Hi. I just wanted to make one comment regarding the UGC property. And just to give you a little bit of the history of it, when we were looking at buying Lot 3 of the RTB, as part of that negotiation, what we did was we had negotiated a give-back of Lot 2. So, Lot 2 was 38 acres. And as part of the Lot 3 deal, we negotiated 20 to 24 acres of that, 38 acres of Lot 2, coming back to the town. And so, one of the things that I've been concerned about is the same thing that Mr. Jajari had pointed out, was that if this litigation, this protracted litigation between Mr. Gainer and the current, or proposed developer of the 180 units that UGC fell through, what kind of exposure would we have at the UGC property if, if we were to rezone this under the MBTA zoning that is being proposed? And I just want to let you know, I calculated that out to 216 units. And so, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that as you're making your decision and deliberating. So, we have right now 180 units that are slated to be going up there. If that falls through and the zone, the zoning as proposed goes through and the UGC property is included as part of the MBTA zoning, our exposure there would be 216 units.
Did you say 260 or 216?
216, 216.
So, it's about, what, 15, 20 more, 25? Well, that's interesting.
I'd love to make a comment on the schedule. I, I said this way back when we started. I, I'm very reluctant to have something pushed to fall because I feel like that says to the community, you have to pass this. And, and essentially, right? That puts it, if it goes to spring and it doesn't get passed, there's a chance to recover and hear from the public, which we've been asking to hear from the public. But the town meeting is another mechanism to hear from the public. The public has a right to vote it down. They also have a right to vote it down the fall. But we're going to be having something hanging over. We've just talked about losing grants and things. And I don't think that's the right thing to do, the community. We have to figure out to get something to spring. I, I'm fully supportive of bringing something to Spring Town Meeting and very much against having it, the one time that people get to vote is under the gun that it has to be passed.
Yolanda?
I would, I don't know this for sure, but I would think that if we're working toward doing what we need to do, and we go to the state and say, "We've tried this. We're going to try again, and it doesn't pass in the fall," I would think we could, you know, they would give us extra time. I don't know. Who knows with this AG? But, and it depends on why it fails, right? What's interesting is we keep hearing about Milton. And I actually heard from someone who lives in Milton, and they said, "One of the reasons the zoning didn't pass, it had nothing to do with the actual density of housing. It had to do with the expected increase in traffic that that potential zoning was going to create. And that's why it failed in Milton," which I.
Well, that's, that's a nice, easy answer for them to give, isn't it?
I'm just saying. So, anyway. And I go back and forth in regards to, you know, do we push this through to spring or not? Or do we, or we, or, you know, do we push it out for fall? What I'm finding interesting for myself is I like to hear from the public. And I've heard some people say, "Keep Pleasant Street in." I mean, "Put Pleasant Street in." We've heard, obviously, for some people tonight, that they don't want Pleasant Street included. I try to consider what business owners need, and that's what I'm hearing from the Jajarios, that they'd like to be included. I'm hearing from Michael regards to include keeping, if we have A in there, that, that could, if the UGC part, project does not go through, we could potentially lose the open space related to that, which potentially could impact our Upper Charles Trail pathway. So, I, I, I think there's been a lot of good work done. But the other, the other thing that someone has brought to me is, and I don't know how large the parcel is, but there's the parcel at the end of Memorial Drive that is currently yellow. I don't know what that zoning means. So, across the street from Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know how large that parcel is. I don't know what the zoning is, but it's been suggested that.
That's highway commerce.
Okay.
And I do not believe that parcel is greater than five acres.
Okay.
I think it has been noted recently, though, by someone that I talked to. I can't remember who, it was someone in this room. And we talked about, and maybe this was like what Michael Herbert was getting at, that if we wait for Fall Town meeting, which I know has its drawbacks, but there's also a chance to let some of these other things play out, like what will happen at UCG, you know, what will happen and other sites on town. And we'll have more of those answers, and then can potentially make changes accordingly. I'm not advocating for that. I'm just putting it out there as something that was discussed. And Yolanda, were you part of that, who I talked to about this?
Yeah, I don't know. I, so. But like I said, I think, I think some good work has been done. We are in the process of having to wrap up the warrant for town meeting. You guys are going to have to have your hearings. I, I think there's, I, I don't know that we have all the answers yet to be able to bring this forward to a town meeting vote. That's my, that's my thought.
I have a question. I think, Peter, you mentioned the idea of having the Attorney General review these. So, if, you know, to go to Kate's concern about the Fall Town meeting, that would give us time to have it be reviewed prior to town meeting. Is that right or not?
Yes, yes, 100%. You know, I think what we're talking, when I, when I, when I say that is, all bylaws throw out MBTA, right? Have to be reviewed by the state. They have to be passed.
But after town meeting typically.
Then zoning bylaws have to be sent, all zoning and general bylaws have to be sent into the, to the Attorney General's office, and they approve them or they deny them. You know, they approved our changes to the ADD in 2001, I want to say, and they rejected our housing moratorium in 2023, right? But with that said, the state is working with communities, right? In the EOH.
LC.
LC. DA CD is always easier for me. They are working with communities, and they are reviewing bylaws as by, as bylaws are produced. They're also looking at, you know, compliance models, which is a very large spreadsheet. I'm not going to bore anybody with except Alvaro. And, and yes, the Attorney General. And so, with that said, there is a part, there is obviously that communication piece, which I think Yolanda noted. And those lines of communication are open right now between the state and communities. And, and I agree, and I agree with Kate's point. You know, do you do, want you to go now, or do you wait until the fall? There's pros and cons. But you, the planning board and the select board are, you know, you are the citizens of Ashland, and it's your, your decision. You know, I think our, our committee, and for some odd reason, we're all sitting on the side of the table like it was planned.
I thought that was supposed to.
I don't think it was planned, but. We've put the town of Ashland in a position, working with the public, with two public forums, with a situation, with a process to move forward. And if we want to, that's great. We're ready to go. But if we're going to start changing things up, if we want to make some edits to it, if we want to continue the public hearing process, I'm going to say right now, we're going to have to look to the fall.
And just one question. Can you tell me an example of 10-units-per-acre development? Like, what does that look like as opposed to 15? Does anybody?
What size is Homer?
Homer is about 3, I would say. 3 acres?
No, no, no. Density per acre.
Oh, 23. Oh, excuse me, 29. 29.
So, 10, it's more like, what, condos?
12 Pond Street is very, 12 Pond Street is 18, I believe, right now. So, if you're looking at that.
No.
Structure, that's what it would look like.
So, 10, but 10 is substantial.
Hold on, hold on. 29 units in total. So, what is that per acre for Homer?
We're going to find out.
Yeah.
Just off the top of my head, though, I do, I can tell you, Pond Street, 12 Pond Street, is one acre, and that's 16 units of housing.
I'm pretty sure Homer.
So, 10 is about half that size.
Is about 9, 10 per acre.
That's retail at the bottom, so.
So, have you seen the photos for Homer? This is Homer. We had it earlier today.
Is that the new Rinderow House?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it.
So, the Burnham property can, in fact, have a project like this right now without any issue, which looks exactly what the ADD Downtown District intended three years ago.
How many years is that per acre?
29.
No, it's not 29.
29 for the entire project. It's not.
It's three acres.
Yes, so.
So, approximately 10, 10 units per acre.
Consistent with what the Burnhams can build right now. And so, what I'm suggesting is, this is exactly what we want there. I don't think we want 29 per acres, which you keep saying. We, this is, this is not 29 per acres, Peter.
So.
And so, with all due respect, I think we've had a ton of public comment. And I, and I do believe that the Burnhams can have their economic interests met by a Homer-esque project. If there's interest in this kind of project for a developer, then the homers can do well with that.
And Anna says you could have more if you want, so.
No, I didn't say that. But what I have yet, but my point is, this is a project that is viable in that area because we're listening and hearing it, and we're considering, and we're working on it. And therefore, the homers could have it too, or something like it. And so, we're not preventing them from developing in a way that I think is consistent with what they're looking for. But 29 per acre would be a very different kind of project. It would be a much bigger project on that side that is not what downtown is supposed to look like per three-year process, three-year process ago, three years ago.
Three years.
But it's 15 we're talking about.
May I?
If, if I may.
I'm sitting here, and I'm not trying to put a wrench in this, in this project, but Kate, I understand that you're concerned about, you know, waiting till, till the fall and with all the things that could happen. So, is there a possibility of having a special town meeting for this specific issue at some point before, before the fall? Maybe early September?
Can I just ask, if, if, if this were to fail in the fall, what would then become the risks associated with that for the town?
That's a good question, Claudia. I don't have an answer to that.
So, what would be, if we wait for the fall, what would be the reason for it?
Hold on, we're looking at the risks. Do you know what the risks would be?
The risk of.
If, if it gets voted down in the fall, we wait till the fall and it gets voted down.
We waited till the fall, and we, and it went, failed whatever we brought before the town, then I think it's supposed to be done by the end of the year.
That's the unknown. This is the unknown, right? Is that. you know, I think everyone's in a, everyone's in the same situation. Right now, they're telling us that we're not gonna be able to apply for these grants, right? And right now, the city, town of Milton
That's a big risk.
It's a huge risk. Yeah, and so we're not gonna apply for grants, and we don't know what's gonna happen with Milton. So that, i- it's, it's, it's unknown, Claudia.
So if, if I can continue with my, my thought process with respect to the, the special town meeting, I'm not that familiar with the special permitting process, and Anna, I, I, I understand your, your idea about, you know, you've never seen the planning board deny a special permit. Well, I'm not sure what the plans are for the Giugiaris down the road, what they wanna do with their property, when they wanna sell it, when they're not planning on selling it. But I'll use a ten-year, I'll use a ten-year window. The board's gonna be different in ten years. Who knows who's gonna be sitting at where you're sitting right now, and you have no idea what they may want or not want. So you, you can't say you've never seen it. There's always the possibility that it could happen. But you, you have to be real about this. You just, you know. So I just, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware of that, and
I only laugh because I imagine myself here in ten years.
Well, good. I, I imagine myself at Wildwood.
All right, let's not get into imagining where we're gonna be.
No, no.
I wasn't laughing at you, I was laughing
No, that's quite all right. I, I laugh at myself, Anna. Don't worry about it. So, but, you know, there have been people that were, were pro, uh, were very supportive of having, you know, unit C, section C, as part of the, uh, project on, uh, from Pleasant Street, so. And there, there were emails that were sent that weren't part of the, uh, record, but I just wanna make sure that people were aware of that.
I absolutely read them all, yes.
So, uh, to say that, you know, everybody was not supportive of it, there, there's quite a few people that were, at the same token. And a good point taken by, by, by Mrs. Giugiaris, that nobody on Pleasant Street was opposed to it, or we didn't hear from them. So, uh,
So I have a, uh, sorry.
I haven't had
I just, one, one, one more quick thing. Lastly, if we, if we have to do, if it's, if it's the, if it's the board's decision to, and I'm saying the select board's decision, to add, uh, section C, I guess the question would be, what would be the process? We need a timetable, so I'm assuming that we would need to redesign the map. We would need to recalculate the figures, uh, of the units per Okay, and then we have to go to, back to, uh, R K G to reaffirm the consultant's, uh, financial status of the financial, uh, of, of that area, including C. So where you already have all those figures for A and B and the other units, all you would have to do is consider what the financial burden would be for Pleasant Street, and add that to the total figures on, on, on a spreadsheet. So it's not like we're doing the whole thing all over again, it's just that section. So I don't know how long that would take. I'm just, I just wanna
I was, I was gonna say, I'm not
I wanna let Brandy in here. She's been waiting.
Thank you. Um, so, you know, I appreciate, I, first of all, thank you for the work that you guys have done, because this is great, great stuff, and I, the discussion tonight has been really good. I think we need to talk about these options, and we need to talk about, you know, the, the trade-offs between going to Springtown meeting and Fall Town meeting. You know, for me personally, we're involved in this comprehensive plan. If I had my way, I mean, we're in the middle of all of our public outreach for the comprehensive plan, and our goal is to reach fifteen percent of the public in Ashland. I, if I had my druthers, I'd, I'd say, let's put pause on this MBTA communities for, for two-plus years until we know what the recommendations are gonna be, but we can't, we can't do that. Um, because I think, I think when we hear from the public on the comprehensive plan, we will hear a lot more voices. Probably a very broad spectrum of voices, I'm hoping. So, you know, for me personally, you know, I, I, I don't wanna make big decisions that would affect the community without that input from the comprehensive plan. So I like the approach that you guys have taken about, you know, basically fulfilling what this MBTA community is, is, is looking for. I think that, that it, it really does meet what the MBTA communities is really looking for, because we have already done a lot of the work at the Rail Transit District. We've already built a lot of housing. We've already permitted a ton of housing. So I think like, you know, and, and I agree with Anna. I think that the, that, the, the Pleasant Street zoning that we had done the overlay, you know, several years ago, does allow for housing, and I would, I would love, I am not anti-growth. Anyone that knows me knows I'm not anti-growth. I think that, that there will come changes to Pleasant Street. I think there, there will be over time. But I think for this particular exercise, I'm, I'm comfortable with what was proposed. I'm comfortable with it going to Springtown meeting. I'm glad you guys have had two public forums. I'm glad we've had the discussion tonight. There'll be more discussion when it goes to the public hearing for the, in front of the planning board. There's lots of discussion. And so I, I, I feel, I personally feel comfortable with what you all have proposed. It's not gonna ever be perfect. None of this is ever gonna be perfect. And I think that, that Ashland is still going to see changes to Pleasant Street. I think that's gonna come, so. So that's just my two cents. I feel, I feel good with the, with the proposal that you've put together.
Anna?
Yeah, I mean, I'll add, I, it is a town meeting. It is democratic process. We could push this forward, and the Burnhams could show up and make a motion to, uh, to propose that their part of the town be included, and technically, we know that it could. And so the town could choose to push it towards, towards that. I don't think we have to have everything cooked up for town meeting. I think town meeting is an opportunity to say, this is what we're presenting, and it's an opportunity for the public to go a different route. And in fact, I think in theory, you could have a majority vote agree with the Burnhams, if they make a motion to such a thing.
I'm not sure that type of motion, I'm not sure that kind of motion can be made on the floor.
I'm so sorry. Thank you for correcting me.
I, I said, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm not sure that type of motion can be made on the floor of town meeting.
Sounds complicated.
I, I'm not sure.
Well, so that would fit with my major concern, which I have said since we started this, and I will keep repeating it. Let's say that happened, like, there's, there's, um, an alternate motion, and people like that idea, and they say, let's go back to the drawing board. Now the public got to, to speak. I, what my major concern is we're boxing in the public, fall, sorry if you don't pass this. They, we might get sued. Look what they did to Milton. I do not want to do that to the public. I, we can prevent that, right? So if we can investigate and say, everything's good, if you tried real hard, we'll give you till the spring of twenty-five, I'm okay with that as well. But if we don't know that, it feels really wrong to do that to the public.
Do we wanna take, like, uh, I'm so hoping all this will be done soon, but what should we sign up for, folks?
Can I ask my question that I was gonna ask, and, um, so I, I know a lot of work's been done. You've been working on the bylaws, and to Joe's point, if we say, okay, what would it look like to add the section C on Pleasant Street? I mean, I would think that when you were doing your evaluation, that some of the evaluation was done on section C before you decided to pull it out.
We were starting to get to that point regarding the mathematics behind it. You know, I think the biggest thing is, then you gotta get into the ADD bylaw, and actually start making the edits into the ADD bylaw to make that qualification. I would ask this question in response. If you do add the twelve acres in, in, along Pleasant Street, are you looking to then remove other sections? And then also, are you then looking to decrease density in other sections? So it's kinda
Personally, for me, no. I would lea- I would leave everything else the same, except add C.
You know, so i- it, it gets, it's not just one, answering one question brings up two. You know, and so, um, that's where I, that's my point of view on it. Now, you know, we could, could and that's where I think everything kinda stands.
Yeah, and I guess just to add to like the G, like just for like the technical aspect of it, is, yes, the parcel did exist at some point, but I cannot just like drag it back into like the model and just do it. I will have to redo every single parcel, every single district, comply it into the model, like the Excel model, and then from there restart it, because you cannot just like plug it in. You have to basically make everything from scratch. So you'll have, it will take some time from like the GIS aspect, because you have to redo the whole process in that part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you unmute Marcelo?
Yep. Marcelo, uh, oh, you're a co-host. You can unmute.
But you need to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, I just listened to the last, uh, five minutes of conversation, what, what Joe and what Yolanda said. It, 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 it almost converges to me, because on the one hand, we have this, this approach with one risk, which Michael Herbert explained. And on the other hand, we have the possibility, uh, what, that we heard tonight, where Pleasant Street could be included, and the, the, the risky proposition of, I guess, the, the other parcel, I guess, A, could be removed, and kind of balance it out. So my question is very simple, because I, I don't know the, the dynamics of the, of the, of the town meeting. Could, could the proposal, if, if, if the work that Alvaro and, and others have to, have to do is, is completed, could the, could, could, could it be in the, in the town meeting, a proposal where it says, we have option A, we have option B, and then the town meeting makes the call of which one, which will address what Kate is suggesting that they have a voice?
Like kind of an informal discussion, you mean? Like an informal vote? Like, I, I don't know. Can you do that?
So essentially, we would present to town meeting each choice of either A or B, and see which one passes with a majority.
So one with and one without.
Exactly. One with C, one without.
Like as a trial run, kind of, like as, but, like
Well, it would be the, it would be the final, it would be the final town meeting
No, you, no.
That's a tough one.
You could not do that.
No.
I just don't know legally, if, if, does that happen?
Legally, I would, I, as a town planner who sat through many town meetings, I cannot get beyond, I cannot get behind that process from a legal standpoint. So once you have a bylaw, right, it has to be advertised, and so it has to be advertised, it can't be changed, you know, and that's what we're going for, right? And so we're looking to advertise the bylaw changes to be put on the warrant, right?
But technically, you could advertise A and B. You could say, A is with this section, B is without this section, or whatever. Like, you're advertising an edited version, right? You're putting the public on notice that these are the two possibilities being discussed.
Or can, can any meeting, I, I, I don't wanna take on, on the comprehensive plan, but can, can any meeting in, in, call for an informal vote on those two options without being ba- binding, so at least we understand where the people stand?
I, I can't
So, so I think what you're, what you're suggesting is more of an informal conversation, or like a forum at town meeting about it, to gather kind of a sense of appreciation. And I think that's our job now. I think we're supposed to be doing that public input. We did two forums. The pu- the planning board, if we're going to spring, would have another one, right? We would have one more, I believe.
No.
We would not?
We would have a public hearing.
That's what I mean. We would have one more public hearing.
We would have a public hearing, yes. We'd have two public hearings.
Right, so we, we already had two. You got, the subcommittee had two.
Correct.
We had one
Those were unofficial public hearings.
Correct.
Two forums.
So we have, yeah.
Public comment today, and then we would have two more hearings with the planning board, so that it would be a total of five opportunities for the public to come with input.
Yeah, but but going forward, tonight, this zone, as of next, you know, next week, right, when we finalize and solidify the zoning changes, that, those zoning change, those zoning changes cannot change once they are advertised. Does that make sense? So after the, after, we could, we could do this, right? We could continue this conversation post the public hearing, you know, post the zoning amendments, open the public hearing, and then say, you know what, we deny, we, we
We're not going to the spring.
We're not going to the spring. You could do that, but once you post that zoning change, you cannot change those. And you cannot really change them on town meeting floor, unless there are minimal scrimmers,
Understood.
You know, down, you know, downgrading the numbers, and so, and that's why tonight's critical. Do you move forward with what we have, or do you postpone into the spring?
Can I ask a question? And, you know, thank you. So I'm trying to understand, um, from, say, the Giugiaris' point of view, the difference between fifteen and ten units per acre, and why is that so important? And I don't know if anyone here can explain that to me, because I
I'm not sure, I'm not sure anyone's gonna be able to explain that to you, because obviously, it's, there's different building styles. There's different building types. That's how you do the parking. It's
So, one thing, so if I could just ask, so they made an impassioned plea to be including this zoning. I guess I would like to hear from them, what's the importance of this difference, because it, it seems to me that ten units per acre is substantial housing and, uh, meets our purposes. So I would, with your indulgence, invite them to come up and just make that point. Like the ten versus fifteen, because I, I have to say that's that's important, at least to my decision-making here.
The difference between the MBTA community bylaw is by right, and the other way would be special permit.
That's not my understanding. Is that true?
That's true.
If you go through the special permit, it takes a long time to go through. Traditio- for instance
But I've had ten units per acre, not special permit.
Right now, in
No, this is, the
Oh, well, then the difference would be, we have about two acres. Ten units per acre would put you at about
Twenty units.
Twenty, and the other would be, be about thirty at, at fifteen per acre.
So what's, what's wrong with that?
I think it's the special permit versus by right. So it would be site plan review rather than a special permit.
Well, I think to Rob's point from the Giugiaris, right, right now, you can, someone could build ten units per acre, so about twenty units. Understandably, that's less than thirty units if we, if we added this.
Right now, you could, as I understand it, you could push a special permit, and you could ask for
Right.
many, many more.
That as well.
You know what I mean? But that's probably gonna occur, most likely, under a scenario where I sell the property to someone, or have an agreement with someone, and they will try and get the permits after the sale. Okay, so it doesn't benefit me at all. All right, unless I come to an agreement with the developer that says it's based on how many units you end up with, which could push it down three, four years down the line. And for instance, I don't know, but Homer Ave's been discussed tonight. When was that originally applied for? That's been three years in the making, hasn't it?
And
I, I don't know.
I don't think so.
It's been, it's only been in front of the board this, I mean, this year, two, twenty-twenty-three, but there were significant delays on the part of the applicant, not on the part of the board.
We are drafting the decision, so, so it's not yours.
We had some long periods of wait, where we were waiting for the applicant.
Well, again, the big difference is, this doesn't help the owners of the property, it helps the developer, okay? Because the developer has deep pockets and a team of lawyers to push this to the end. All right?
Okay. All right, thank you, Dana.
I think for me, and, um, and I wasn't necessarily gonna
Thank you.
speak about this. We, our, our man, we took our mandate, right, about what we were given, and tried to approach it in the best way we can. We've explained the parameters that we were working from. And for me, um, one of those, I think, was to let the, um, let anything that, that would change Ashland, if possible. Because we eliminated other properties, too, that we were looking at. We were looking at the Kitty Fenwall property. Easy to walk to all the schools, right? Might be a great place for kids. But we eliminated that, because we didn't, and, and, please, everyone jump in if you disagree, but we did, we kinda went away from making a decision in our group that, um, that was a decision for the town to make about the feel of the town, the look of the town, the density of the town. Where do we want this in the town? Where do we want this? We didn't wanna make that decision as four, four people and only two residents, right? We didn't, we didn't think that was our job, right? So we were trying to come up with a solution that would let, that would get us into compliance. Zoning can change anytime. Uh, properties can be added into the zoning, and it, it's up to us. We can Zoning can change anytime, uh, properties can be added into the zoning, it's up to us, we can change it next year, and add more property into that zone if we want, right, once we have more of the answers. But we were trying to get us into compliance now, without, without, um, making a decision, even amongst the ten of us, what Ashland looks like. We were trying to let that for the people, and, and including, so including other areas, you know, making them by right, didn't seem to be in that, in that flavor to us.
Yeah, I was saying, in that vein.
In that vein.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do we take a conservative approach? Yes, we did. There's still some risks that Marcelo and, and Michael were talking about? Yeah, there's still some risks, because there's still some unknown stuff, we're not saying that, you know, but that's, that's where we were coming from, and as much as, I, I, I think I personally too, do think it's a good spot for mixed use, it's just, you'd love to get off the train, and, you know, and maybe you live there, or there's businesses there, it is good. Is it for me to make that decision? No, I would say no, that's not my decision until a project is before me, as the planning board, and then I will judge the project on its merits. But that's, that, that would be, that was my stance on it. I, I'm not against it, but I'm, I don't think it's part of this. I think the comprehensive plan process is this, and we have a significant investment of that, and that zoning can come in at any time, we can, we can change that ADD zoning anytime we want. We can, we can add other properties later into the MBTA community zoning as we want, that, that the state would be thrilled, right? That we put more acres in there. But that was where, that was, is where I keep landing, as much as I think personally, it is a good place for some kind of mixed use, I just don't know what that is yet, and I don't want to just, I'm hesitant to throw it in there without thinking about it thoroughly, that's...
I mean, I wouldn't think, that's a good point, if this goes through as, as kind of proposed, except for May, if people want Pleasant Street, there's fall to add it, and any other time, but, like, that's... That gets us... That, I thought that was sort of the agreement, to get into compliance, right? And, and that's what you guys have brought.
That was our goal.
Yes.
I, I, I would say, hearing it stated that way, Tricia, makes me think about this a little bit differently. And whereas I hear what the Djarri's are saying about trying to add that, but the, the reminder from you that, as Brandy said, we're in the process of a large comprehensive plan, this would get us into compliance, so we don't have to worry about some of that other stuff. We're hearing from a lot of the public that they don't want Pleasant Street added at this point, but we do have the ability to look at that in the future, should that be the right thing, based on what we're hearing from the comprehensive plan. With...
And, and, just for the...
Hold on, let me finish, with that statement, I would say, we move forward with what's been presented, get it to spring, and if it doesn't pass at spring, as it's been said, right, if people say, no, we want that other area, or there's concerns about A, because of what Michael had said with the, um, with UGC, then we can go back and look at it, but at least we've potentially gotten us, ourselves...
Into compliance.
Into compliance.
Marcelo?
I'm just gonna mention, uh, Yolanda stole my thunder, I think, after listening to Tricia, I, I totally concur with that.
Well, the only thing I'll add is, um, that I, I do think an opportunity to build housing is good. I'm not sure I'd be as conservative as, as you laid out, but I am, I think it was important to hear that there is an option to build housing there now, whether we include it there or not, so that, that kind of swings it for me. So I will, you know, at this point, support this proposal as, as stated. So...
Potential caveat, that at some point in time down the road, we could probably look at that piece of property we added to, to see how, see how it plays out for years, with respect to the changes that we made, to be in compliance with the zoning for the MBTA properties, and see how that goes. And if there are no issues and it passes, and we're, we're good, and the state gives their blessing, what would hap- you know, it's just interesting, what would happen if they said we didn't do enough? What, what, what would we do with that?
I think that's...
If they come back and say, you know, you folks didn't do enough, because housing is already there, we want...
That doesn't...
I, I understand, but you never know.
No, we'll have time to make changes if that happens.
If, if, if it gets rejected, like any bylaw, I think this is what Kate's point is, if it gets rejected, you know, strike one, but guess what, there's three, you know, obviously, there's, strike two would be, well, the second bite of the apple will be in the fall.
So just given the late hour, like, do you feel like we're gonna have a vote?
I think so, I'm, I'm looking at Tricia, so I think we had talked about the possibility of a vote to endorse this, and, um, are we doing one vote for both committees, or are we doing separate votes?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to know how to move forward, because those are two very different paths.
As a subcommittee.
As a subcommittee.
Yes.
Right, and that's, we need a new directive, is of what...
All right, so I'm, I'm asking procedurally, if, um, do we take one, one vote of both committees together, or should we do separately for the select board?
I would recommend two separate votes.
Okay, so I guess as chair of the select board, I will look at my members and say, are, are, is someone prepared to make a motion? Okay, why don't you go ahead, then?
Sure. I move that we support and approve moving forward of the recommended MBTA zoning option B that was presented.
Marcel, can you confirm that option B, is, is that the word, is that what we're talking about?
You need to confirm the housing approach.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Alvaro.
I will second that.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor in the select board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, so the motion is carried. Then thank you for your work on the subcommittee.
And on behalf of the, I guess, for the planning board, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed MBTA zoning option B, as presented.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call out?
People make a bye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So we will, uh, move forward?
Yeah, so the next process for, 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 for us, the planning board, will be to take the bylaw amendments, um, I have to notify, uh, and send those to the newspaper for advertisement by the end of next week. Um, and those, and then the planning board will hold a public hearing on the first meeting in April. Obviously, the, this bylaw change will be submitted to the warrant through Jen Ball, you know, she, she has it in there. The board of selectmen, obviously, will have to do, the board, the select board will have to do your job, enclose the warrant, and go through that procedural process. The planning board will have two public hearings, uh, at the two meetings in April, and then at some point, and at the most likely, the second meeting in April, we will vote to either support zoning article as drafted, and/or to not support. And then we will see you at town meeting.
All right, thank you all.
Do we have that one more agenda item that you wanted to cover quickly?
Good thing you reminded me, Michael?
Comprehensive plan steering precinct one person.
Here, here he comes.
Yeah, here he is.
You thought I'd fallen asleep on you yet?
No, it was me, no.
You were hiding from us.
No, so, unfortunately, we don't have a precinct one candidate today. There is a gentleman that had interviewed before that was interested, and I'd sent him some information, he was going to review that and get back to us.
Okay, so procedurally, do we really have to meet together to do this? Not that I'm against you guys, but, uh, could we vote separately?
We could probably vote separately.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I just want to make a quick note, before all the planning board and select board me, the select board members leave, that...
We're never leaving, we're gonna be here.
That on April eighteenth, right, the comprehensive plan will be having and reviewing their existing conditions, and all planning board and select board members will be invited to that meeting.
Can I just say one thing, that's April vacation week? It's, I'm not gonna be able to make it.
Okay.
And what is this?
Just because of the timing, because it's not a, it's not a standard planning board or a select board meeting, it's our typical comprehensive...
It's a comprehensive plan meeting?
Which I was gonna miss.
Oh.
Yes, but...
But I, I'm just saying, like, just to make sure everyone else is aware, because there might be others that are...
I might be missing that one.
It's gonna be around, it's typically at seven o'clock, but just...
And what is it, what is it we're doing?
We're getting a report from our...
Consultant regarding existing conditions?
Oh, so this is kind of an important presentation.
So it may be important for Michael and you and our co-chairs to say, put something out to the full comp plan group, and go, this is April vacation, how many people will be impacted? Because at our last meeting, the, the meeting that we had to have special to cover for February, we were lucky we made quorum, so if this is vacation week, we should look at potentially doing it the week before, April eleventh.
Planning board meeting?
Planning board meeting. The MBTA public hearing on it.
I was gonna say, could we, could we, could we do it as part of the planning board meeting? Like, do you guys, I don't know what you guys have on your, on your agenda.
Is it a...
It's just a presentation, right? It's just a presentation by the...
Potentially in April, yeah, potentially.
I mean, I don't know what Goldson's...
I don't know what Goldson's doing, but, that's a good point.
I was just gonna say, because it's just, it's, it's, it's a little, it's just, that week is tough.
Yeah, why, why don't we look at that, because...
Do existing conditions as part of...
Uh, that might be possible, assuming it's a nine, hour ninety-minute type of thing?
And you would expect the full planning board and select board to be there?
I just made a note that, um, I just made a note on my agenda that April eighteenth, to go into further detail, I'll be speaking out of line, out of turn.
Okay.
I will be here though.
Rescheduling it, is that...
It looks like we may have to.
Okay.
Peter will let us know.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll work with Michael, obviously, but I just wanted to make a note of that, but...
Sure.
We should probably put that on the agenda for the next comp plan meeting.
Agreed.
And I'm gonna, and I'll kind of hold a spot, try to hold a spot, for April eleventh, in case you need it.
Okay. All right, anything else we should touch base?
Just motion to adjourn the select board.
Second.
All those in favor of select board adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned, thank you all.
Planning board, don't go anywhere.
I know, we're getting to our best time.
Yeah.
This is, this is what things do good.
Oh, my God. We're not inviting you to our meeting ever again.
Alvaro better get out of here. Are you all ready to drop?
Okay, the thing I...
My best time.
I think, obviously, we may, thing one, I think, to skip ahead to seven, I think, I think we might need to look at another...
So we're not doing, we're not doing five?
I, I just want to throw this...
Weren't we gonna do the precinct thing with them?
They said that there's no candidate yet.
If you jump ahead on the agenda...
Thank you.
Can we jump to reports and go to comprehensive plan? Because then I have some information that will change what you're gonna say.
Okay. So, can you give me an update on comprehensive plan?
So, we, um, the steering committee, uh, got a little out of cycle meeting, because it, um, and what Yolanda referred to, there wasn't barely a quorum, we met quorum.
Yeah, no, we lost the, oh, I think I'm on, my own.
Amanda, do you hear us? Okay.
So we were not on target where we wanted to be to meet the public engagement goals, so the steering committee voted to, um, extend the, the public engagement period we're in, which is survey, public forum, slash meeting in a box, and crowd mapping till April twenty-sixth. So that gives us...
Okay.
More time.
Thank you, that, that was a great jump in, yay. Okay, because I'm like, damn, we can't get to it again. Okay, so then, um, going back, uh, to Starbucks, we just, we want to give, we don't have anyone from Starbucks here, but Peter and I have been talking about this a lot, we've been trying to gather some information, so all the stuff is a little informal, it's not all documented, but let, let me tell you, did, did everyone get a chance to kind of look at the, the offending view, call it?
So it's in your binder, and this is the only picture in the binder, but, um, obviously, everyone knows that there was electrical equipment posted on the side of the building, and talking with the applicant, Greg, um, Starbucks and Greg Salvador, the owner of the building, um, has proposed to modify and to change the canvas of the mural to the front portion of the building.
Yeah, so as I reported kind of last time, and I, I think other people have checked it out, since then, you come out of CVS, and you look at that short end of the building, and there's a, some electrical boxes and things, the kind of, in my mind, I think severely impede on the mural on that side. If you don't have it in front of you, I don't know if you guys online have it in front of you.
I'm trying to grab it right now.
Peter's trying to get up, but it was basically a, a wall, and a grant, and the wall's kind of set back from the street, and then a door, and then another little section of the wall. So, and the electrical stuff was put on the wall, the, the larger section of the wall, so even really making it even smaller, the usable area. So, um, but in, a, a few things to bring up here. One is that frankly, I didn't think that, I didn't know the front of the building would be an option. The side of the building only came up because, really because we wanted it to be something inherent with Ashland, right? And also because this, that side of the building just wasn't meeting the standards of, um, of a three-sided building, according to the Ashland bylaws, right? So we came up with this idea of a mural, or they did, actually, they proposed it to us, I think, and, um, and we all thought it was a good idea. So now the electrical equipment is in the way, um, but we're being offered the front of the building, which could be much more visible coming down Union Street, to see this, where the side, they, there are, there is a junction box there, there is plantings to hide the junction box, that's always been a part of that, part of the site, part of the site plan. Thing number two, um, Peter has had a conversation with Stacy and the cult, well...
Yeah, so I've talked to Stacy a couple times from the Ashland Cultural Council, and I was in an email with her, and the Cultural Council supports the change in the mural to the front of the building. Obviously, it's more, obviously, visible, it's up front, and so she, and the Cultural Council, they're, they're working, they have a couple artists they're trying to work with, uh, but obviously, for a location, the Cultural Council believes that this is a better location than that side of the building facing, uh, one twenty-six.
So then as a third part of that, um, Peter has been in touch with, I don't know if it was the owner, or the, um...
I've been in touch with the owner, here, off and on, um, and so, yes.
Because my, my other concern about that was like, well, what about our elevation? It's still kind of a, not a great elevation, and this, this greenery that we're showing, without a mural on it, isn't really impressive. So they seem, apparently, they are open to, again, I don't have any documentation, but they're, they're open to re-looking at those plantings, not looking at removing the electrical box or anything, like, the things that are already hidden in there, there's a big junction box in there, but redoing some of the plantings to make that, so that when you're coming out of CVS, which is the primary view when you see this, is just to make that...
Cover it up a little bit.
Cover it up, have better, have better vegetation there, you know, and, and so that's, um...
And Starbucks, according to Greg, has their own screening, obviously, they're gonna put screening on, they, they have their brand, they have their models, they don't want to see, they put this on the side of the building either, and so I need to reach out and work with Greg, and just to kind of get up, get a better kind of feel of, of what's being proposed. But regarding the mural and the mural location, the canvas, right now, the discussion is to move the mural to the front of the building.
So I'm just trying to get some feedback on this, to, to me personally, I'm kind of hesitantly saying, seems like kind of a win-win. I like the idea of a, maybe a, a mural in a more prominent location, I like the idea of better greenery, maybe it wasn't what we started out as, but might, might be better, but it's...
I mean, I think we have to look prospectively forward, and the past is the past, here we are. It sounds like if the art, the art folks who are working hard on this are comfortable with this, for me, it just seems like a logistical issue now, because we had a decision, we had a rendering, now it's something different. I would just want to figure out, what's the way to formalize this, is it like a letter from them that says, hey, this is what we're gonna do, and we kind of like agree to it, like, just kind of making it official in some way, they're not here... it, like, just kind of making it official in some way, they're not here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say yes. Typically, I always have this as, you know, my, my, I call this, in my, through my experience, I would call this a minor modification.
Yeah.
It's, it's come in, we say this, it's a gender item, kind of have a conversation about it, it's a vote, I create a little memo, this is the change, describe it.
And do they need to, I, I would think they, we would need them to consent to it because it's sort of agreed upon with them.
Correct.
So it would be like, hey, we've drafted this memo, we get something in writing from them confirming, and it's almost like we have to make findings, that we, we understood that this happened, it requires a modification, we got input from the cultural folks who are working on it, we approve it, we've gotten their consent, and we, we have to all sign it, right? To make it sort of official.
We can.
Because we're kind of modifying the decision.
Yeah, there's no issue that we can all sign it.
Yeah, I think as long as we go through that formality, I'm comfortable.
Is that John's EPIS panel, what is that? Is that a paint that this one is rendering?
No, I think it is a, what do you call an EPIS panel? EPS.
So I'm just, it is an EPIS panel?
The, the, the dark, right? Yeah, I don't think the dark can be painted on.
So I'm just curious, like, you said, those electrical panels are visible at a distance, irrespective of how far you drive towards that. I wonder if this mural can be a corner element that returns towards that door, assuming it's a, it's a door on the side with that awning that's there on the salvation? Can that be a mural that's not only on the facade, on the front, but something that returns and becomes a corner element?
I was thinking of that too, that on the bottom, it's a possibility that something turns the corner until they get to the electrical equipment, you know?
Yeah, something that distracts you from all those elements, but at the same time, is powerful enough, because when you are driving down that Union Street, you are seeing both those angles very, very prominently. So, looking at that square footage of what's just on the side, you return that mural, kind of create an element that it literally returns toward that door, I don't know if you can come proud of the facade, but it doesn't, way of making that really be an element that will showcase not only their brand, but also kind of create an interesting three-dimensional mural, I feel like that could be.
I would, I.
And how flexible they are.
Yeah, well, I would think maybe it might also land in the, like, as an option for the artists.
Yeah.
Like, you could do this, or you could round the corner, propose something to round the corner. I, I would assume, but we hadn't talked, I don't think Peter talked about that option, but like I said, I was very surprised when they offered the front, I didn't realize that was an option. I think it's an awes, I think it's a pretty awesome option, but.
And I would also just note when I look, when I analyze the building drawings, I mean, the building plans, it looks like there's a screening wall that's coming, that's somewhere inserted in that area as well. And so I got to take, I want to ask the question, where is the screening wall, what's going on, and just kind of get a better understanding of it. And I, and I don't think we can go, I think this is just meant to say, yeah, here it is, here's your, here's your new canvas. And I think that conversation is great, but I think the next level, and I'm happy to do that leading up to the next meeting, I just want to kind of have a follow-up with everybody tonight.
So any other comments from people online? Otherwise, it's just, it seems like a general okay with the path forward that we'll continue to pursue? Amanda and Marcelo, sounds okay?
Everything that has been discussed is a plus.
Okay.
Agree.
All right, great, thank you. I love the nice short answers, too. You guys are awesome. Okay. All right, so that just leads us to any updates, and the minutes, if we want to, again, I, what, why don't we take the minutes really quickly? Did people have a chance to look at them? I mean, they're very thorough, I thought.
I did look at them, Tricia, just to answer your question.
I'm sorry, Marcelo?
I did look at them, and nothing jumped out of me.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember where I have them here. Okay.
I, I thought it was great, really detailed notes lately. I, I will say the formatting on page three on, just seemed a little run on, like, there was not a lot of spaces on top of page three between paragraphs. I don't know if that makes any sense to you guys, but like line 75 through 96, like one paragraph ends, and then like.
96?
Yeah, like line 77 probably needs spacing between 76 and 77, and.
Just, just in there, just some.
Like, between line 81 and 82, I just, I just feel like it got a little squished.
Yeah.
Just the squishing needs to be un-squished.
Yeah.
I did have one thing.
Okay.
On line 108, it says, Mr. Matzek noted that sewer capacity documentation has been received.
Yeah.
And it makes it seem like everything, so I, I would just put some in front of that, some sewer capacity document, I'm not sure what we were looking at at the time, but as we know, we kept, we asked for more later. It'll at least just say that maybe there was more to come.
Okay.
I'm going to start my screen share.
And, sorry, the line 76, I think that's telecom building versus.
76, oh, telecom, yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the February 8th, 2024 minutes as amended.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Keep going, good eye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jurzegau.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, so those, we're good with that, so we keep up with that. Everything else is just updates, anyone have important updates that, that they don't want to wait, important announcements?
I think we're good.
I am too. Nothing's important to me, maybe, right now.
Let's say the breakfast, April 12th.
Kate and me, I think, are going to a planning conference in Worcester this Saturday.
Yes.
We'll try to bring something fun back, something planning related.
Good luck with that. Yeah, I know, Emma will be there.
Oh, Emma.
Emma will be giving a presentation on MBTA zoning.
We'll take a selfie, I think I'm, I think I'm going to that.
Okay, Emma and Emily Ins, who's our, who, who we've been working with, so Emily and I have a working, she's been kind of working on us with the zoning and stuff like that, but great wealth of knowledge, great person, too.
You guys should come next year, we should do a retreat there.
It's always a tough Saturday.
Marcelo and Amanda, did you have anything you needed to add tonight?
No.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 10:58 PM.
A second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Keep going, good eye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jurzegau.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Thank you, everyone. We haven't had a long one like this in a while.
Good night, thank you.
Drive safe, everybody.